All right, we're ready to get started. Today's Tuesday, January 28th, 2025. And it is our work session, calling the meeting to order and giving notice that at this work session, the City Council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. Can we have roll call?
Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet?
Here.
Councilmember Aslan?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Present.
Councilmember House?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Spence?
Here.
Councilmember House, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? It would be my honor. Please stand if you're able. Vice Mayor, would you read our mission statement?
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
And Councilmember Aslan, would you read our land acknowledgement?
It's always a pleasure. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. Next up is open call to the public. This enables the public to address council about an item that is not on the prepared agenda. Comments related to items that are on the agenda will be taken at the time that that item is discussed. It appears on the agenda twice, and we'll need a comment card from you if you would like to speak. You have three minutes, and there is a clock right down here so you can keep track. And first up, we have Eric Wolverton. Hold on just a second. Is the microphone on?
Thank you. Okay, I guess I was just loud normally. Well, good afternoon again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name's Eric Wolverton. I'm the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity of Northern Arizona, and I wanted to take a moment to update you on our 40-starter home development at Timber Sky. First, it should be mentioned that without the entire team, from community development being 100% committed to the success of this project, I would not be here today. I think there's great value for you to hear from me that Team Flagstaff is doing all that can be done to develop affordable workforce homeownership opportunities for our hard-working residents. With that, our site's civil work is 50% complete with a goal to have all civil done by May 1st. While that phase is finishing up, we will begin installing our foundations in March and April, Mother Nature depending, and we'll raise our first 10 starter homes in May. This first week of June coming up, we are hosting the Blitz Home Builders. This dynamic team of 80 volunteers from across the country will complete the construction of our first 10 starter homes in just 10 days. I mention this tour de force because we need our local community to help too. So on February 1st, Habitat will be requesting and opening up the ability for local volunteers to help along with the Blitz Build team in early June. Many thanks to the city affordable housing incentive policy allowing Habitat to build more homes at a faster pace. With the help of many, we hope to have these homes ready to sell in late July. We had over 650 applicants for these first 10 starter homes alone. Finally, I wanted to share a story with you. A couple months ago, our Timber Sky was part of the Coconino County Sustainable Building Tour. This tour gives city and county residents the opportunity to look at innovative, sustainable practices in homes. During that tour, we had a couple pull up in their car. They owned a second home in Timber Sky. Unknowing of the development or Habitat's involvement, after a 10-minute conversation, they simply drove off. The next week, Habitat received a first-time gift from this couple, and from them, we received $50,000. If that's not screaming "yes" in my backyard, I don't know what is. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Walter Crutchfield.
Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor Sweet, council members, it's an honor to be here today, really to update you about the status of Habitat as well as the ROARs, Lytec Affordable Housing at Timber Sky. I know that you'll be out in the area on Thursday, so I would encourage you to look across the street and feel good that you did that. You had something to do with that, that we can make a difference. I want to share an anecdote with you that we've had two HOA meetings since Habitat and ROARs were announced and since we've been under construction. So I'm the president of the HOA, and I always go in with trepidation because I'm just waiting for the "not in my backyard" to show up, and it hasn't showed up yet. There's sometimes pushback, but for the most part, the few hundred residents that we have at Timber Sky currently, they're incredibly supportive of affordable housing. And I think it just goes to state that when you push the limits and you build these types of housing together and show people that they can participate and they can feel good about being in a community, that there's a great end result. We did have someone on one of our meetings complaining about some things and asking questions about, now, will those Habitat people be able to use our facilities? Can they use our pickleball courts? Can they use... So it was kind of trending in not a great direction, not in my backyard direction. And one of the residents raised their hand and said, "I'd like to say something." And she said, "For five years, we lived in transitional housing here in Flagstaff. We saved our money. And then we came to Timber Sky and bought our first home." I've heard many of you talk about "those people, those people," and I want you to know, we are those people. We're your neighbors. We live here, and without transitional and affordable housing, we would not have been able to save the money that allowed us to buy our first home at Timber Sky. So when you get discouraged about people who come and say, "Well, we like affordable housing, just not here, not here, not here," keep pushing, keep pushing, keep believing, keep doing great things, because I believe together, we can solve this problem, and I think we're just at the beginning of seeing a huge amount of solutions. And Flagstaff is way ahead of the rest of the state of Arizona, so congratulations for that.
Thank you. All right, moving down to item number five, review of the draft agenda for February 4th. Council, do you have any questions or concerns about the draft agenda? All right, then we'll move down to item number six, January work anniversaries.
Mayor, if you'll give me just one moment, I need to pull up the presentation. Thank you for that pause. So, thank you, Mayor and Council. We're here today to talk about our January work anniversaries and to celebrate with those employees who have accomplished their milestone, which is their first year, and then we do every five years after that. So that's what we have for you today. For our first-year anniversaries, we've got individuals from our marketing team, from recreation, the library, our police department, as well as water services, development services, which is part of community development, our courts, as well as our communications specialist over at the police department. Finishing up this list, additional employees with our police department. So as you can see, they're working really hard on their recruitment and attraction. So beginning our five-year anniversaries, we have Sabrina Beard. She is one of our marketing specialists. We also are celebrating two of our magistrates. They're on-call magistrates, so we don't necessarily have a picture of them. So in order to recognize the great work that they did, you'll see some clip art that's reflective of our justice system. The first is Louis Levine, and the next is Russell Hughes. This is actually our courthouse, a picture of our courthouse. Continuing with our five-year anniversaries, we have David Millis. He's part of our capital engineering group. And moving along to our 10-year anniversaries, we have Javier Avia. He's one of our parks technicians, part of our pros team. And also Ralph Schmidt. He's our creative services manager for our Discover Flagstaff team, part of Economic Vitality. We also have Mac McNamara celebrating 10 years. He's a Water Services Section Director. He works in engineering for Water Services. Those two lovely boys. Moving on to our 20-year anniversaries, we have Adam Nelson, who's also part of our Water Services team as an Operator Five. And Mike Lavelle, he's one of our police sergeants. And Ray Slim, he's one of our lead maintenance workers. So I want to tell you a little bit about Patrick. I believe he's here today. Hey, Patrick, if you want to come on up, we like to embarrass you. So Patrick joined our city, so moved to Flagstaff and came to our organization in January of 2000, joined us from Prescott Valley. He had experience in water distribution as well as an ADEQ distribution certification. They gathered some history for us here to help us understand that Patrick was one of our first city employees to have a state certification. He joined the ranks with Bonnie and Kent and other experienced Water Services staff who onboarded him into our organization. In 2006, Patrick promoted to the Distribution Crew Supervisor, where he excelled for 17 years with our organization. In 2022, he joined the team as the Interim Water Services Director in Field Operations. So Field Operations is basically taking care of all the pipes that take stuff out and brings things in, as well as now stormwater as well, making sure that those channels stay healthy to be able to move those waters. Again, he was later promoted to this position in August of 2023. We like to tell you a little bit more about Patrick. When he's not here making sure that we have what we need from a Water Services team, he enjoys restoring classic cars and playing billiards with his dad. So Patrick, I want to give you the opportunity to say a few words if you don't mind.
Sure.
Okay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, Patrick O'Connor, Water Services Section Director of Field Operations. Thank you for the recognition for the 25 years of service with the City of Flagstaff, all which have been within Water Services. I actually grew up in Flagstaff, even though I worked a few years in this field in Prescott Valley, decided to move back home. But I really appreciate the opportunity that you've given me. I have a great team. Thus why I've stayed with the same division the entire time and plan on finishing my career here. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have Carrie Nelson, who is part of our Economic Vitality Division, also working at the Discover Flagstaff. You've heard about some of their employees already today. She's another great member of their staff. She's been there for 25 of her 30 years with the City of Flagstaff. Her steadfast approach, keeping the Milligan House maintained, making sure the team knows where they need to be, and compliance has been a huge asset to our City of Flagstaff organization. She's been instrumental in her success, working with the Tourism Commission. They have monthly meetings and also an annual process of presenting the marketing plans for the next fiscal year. She works hand-in-hand with the team on the yearly budget process, making sure that we have the travel and vital shipping of materials around the globe for the work that we do in tourism. She leans in when the visitor center needs help with staffing and so many more things to make sure that they're successful in their endeavors. Carrie also is a board member for the Pride Festival, taking this festival to new heights over the years and sharing with our team how best to market the event. She's also a huge help with volunteering in other areas when our stakeholders request her assistance. The Discover Flagstaff team is so proud of Carrie as the longest-tenured employee with their team and the positive and uplifting member that she is. So I don't, I'm not sure if Carrie is with us today, but certainly I want to take a moment to congratulate her and a round of applause. So that's all that we have for you today, Council. Thank you again for celebrating with us, and we'll be back in February.
Thank you, Shannon. Councilmember Garcia?
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate all of our team members here at the City of Flagstaff. I'm fairly new to my position, so when I see even those one-year anniversaries, I understand the commitment that our employees and that our team, that our team members really are making there. I also wanted to do a personal shout-out to 10-year anniversary holder Javier Avia. Some 30 years ago, he was, I believe he was my first supervisor at my first job, and it was at a trust company. And when we would hold the trusses with both hands over our head, Javier would hold them with one hand, and then when he really wanted to make us work harder, he would hold them with one finger. And I'm sure that that same work ethic has carried forward in his tenure here at the City of Flagstaff. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, down to item number seven, presentation from Northern Arizona University School of Mechanical Engineering.
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, I'm Jeff McCormick, the new Economic Development Manager. And I have a story for you, a story about a recent event known as Gravity Lab, where I witnessed NAU engineering graduate students present their innovations, and I responded with genuine excitement about the potential that these ingenious creations could have in improving our larger society, far beyond Flagstaff and well beyond the borders of the United States. The innovations, excuse me, the innovations conceptualized by these mechanical engineering students from NAU will amaze you, and if they don't truly amaze you, I will buy you lunch, and I mean that. From an economic development perspective, you have NAU students here that have developed groundbreaking innovations, some of which will positively impact the quality of life for millions of people. After they've developed prototypes for their innovations and have successfully tested their prototype, showing that their innovation achieves the purpose for which it is designed, once they've accomplished that breakthrough, the question is, then what? That scenario is where economic developers are at their best. When an entrepreneurial inventor wants to find investors for their budding business concept, when an entrepreneurial inventor wants to hire employees because they can't do it all, when an entrepreneurial inventor wants to copy or mass-produce their prototypes, when an entrepreneurial inventor wants to find or build a manufacturing facility, and when an entrepreneurial inventor wants to purchase equipment for that industrial facility, when an entrepreneurial innovator wants to distribute their innovation to regional and national markets, and when an entrepreneurial innovator wants to expand their distribution to international markets, and when an entrepreneurial innovator wants to learn about intellectual property regulations, and when an entrepreneurial innovator, after years of trial and error, grows their business, employs 100 people, and grosses $10 million in annual revenue, revenue that they then reinvest into their employees, their products, and yes, their community. These events are a sequence that entrepreneurs tend to thrive in, and economic developers can help them with each and every one of these milestones. And what these students from NAU represent with their creativity, their ingenuity, their motivation to achieve and succeed, they represent the caliber of talent and potential I outlined, potential that could positively impact the quality of life for millions of people, and in so doing, could make our larger society a better place to live. So without further delay, I have the privilege of introducing to you Dr. Michael Schaefer, Associate Dean for Research, a teacher, mentor, and role model for these students.
Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor Sweet, and the rest of Flagstaff City Council, thank you for taking the time to receive this presentation. We, this genesis of this presentation came from an event, this Flagstaff Gravity Lab Collider, which is a collection of entrepreneurs in the greater Flagstaff area that get together and have sessions about economic development and startups. And we were asked to present there to demonstrate some of the research that we're doing in the Mechanical Engineering Department at NAU. I myself recently moved into the Associate Dean for Research role within the Steve Sangi College of Engineering, and I'm realizing now I should probably open up the presentation that we have here, there we go, while I'm talking to you guys. And as part of this event, we put together three-minute presentation research talks that we give, and this is very often done for graduate students to try to encapsulate what their research likes like in three minutes at a very high level. And I've tried to do that, and the students that are going to be presenting today are going to run through some of the research that they are currently involved with. Then, you know, this research is really a kind of a small part of the feedback loop, I think, the economic feedback loop that exists between federally-funded research, sometimes foundational research that's providing, funding that's provided, the research that goes on at universities, and how, and hopefully you can see through this, how those ideas can be generated and then fertilized through things like moonshot and collaborative events like the Collider event to generate, hopefully eventually, economic activity within the greater Flagstaff area. So we've got a number of different, we've got six different students that are going to be presenting today across a wide array of different topics. I'm not going to dig into it too much, but these are the presentations that we've got from Sarah Massa, Maryam Wyatt, Sophia, and Holly Burns, and they're working with Dr. Feigenbaum, and Dr. Tim Becker are here with us today, as well as Dr. Supayan De, who wasn't able to make it today. So, and I'll let them get into what their research is about. Just to give you an idea about the Mechanical Engineering Department at NAU, we've got about 700 undergraduate students, almost close to 40 graduate students in our Mechanical Engineering Program. We've got a variety of different degrees. And in terms of the research, you know, we're currently actively managing 26 different research awards, up to about $13 million worth of active awards, right? And that's just Mechanical Engineering. We've got much larger departments within our, within our college, the College of Engineering at NAU. And so that revenue doesn't necessarily just go to paying for classes, right? That's paying for students, for graduate students that feed back into the university, and hopefully through the research that they do, generate hopefully startups at some point. So in terms of the faculty that we've got here in our department, we've got research from all over, you know, kind of spans the entire gamut of engineering. We've got a lot of strengths in biomechanics and bioengineering. We've got some strengths, research strengths in robotics and human-robotic interactions, smart materials. Our department chair there in the center, Dr. Chalkenell, works on smart materials and fatigue and mechanics along with Dr. Feigenbaum, and one of her students is going to be presented today. We've got a lot of collaboration potential, I think, within our department, with private partnerships, right? There are federally-funded avenues for research funding that could fund both local startups, and that, some of that money can also then be used in partnership with universities through SBIR and STTR awards to fund both startups here in the local economy, as well as fundamentally some money to provide support for graduate students to do research. And so we've gone through and done a number of those, and Dr. Becker's company, and some of his students are going to be talking a little bit about how that, those funds generate research dollars both for our institution. So I'm going to try to run through this relatively quickly, but here are a number of our different research partners, right? We've got partnerships with SRP out of Phoenix, with the National Science Foundation, we've got grants through the Arizona Board of Regents, and Brain Angiosum Foundation, and a lot of these are funding active awards right now. The other big announcement I want to let everybody know about, and you may have heard about this, the, we recently were awarded the largest cash gift from Steve Sangi in NAU's 125-year history, right? It was a $10 million award. We recently changed our name to the Steve Sangi College of Engineering. This money is going to be coming online over the next few years, and it's going to really be transformative to the College of Engineering. So without further ado, I'm going to let the students start to talk for themselves. They're going to have, hopefully, three minutes. They've promised me that these are three-minute, high-level talks, and we're going to start off with Sarah, and then we're just going to run through these presentations. So once they get done, she gets done, the next student will come up. So thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, I'm Sarah. I want to talk about my project very briefly. My project is about mechanical behavior of moisture stream materials that have the application for carbon capture. We know that global warming is a big issue these days, and it causes by the human activity and CO2 is releasing every day and increasing every day. CO2 acts like a blanket and keeps the heat in the environment and causes the global warming. So what should we do? Yeah, we should reduce the amount of the CO2 that we are releasing, but it's not enough. We should come up with another idea. We should directly capture the carbon in the air. We call it DAC, Direct Air Capture. Why I'm specifically talking about the CO2, because we know that there are other gas, greenhouse gases, but we know that it has the largest amount among the other gases in the greenhouse, and also it has the most effect on the climate change. And another thing about CO2 is that we can develop this CO2 that we are capturing and use it in other industries like chemistry, in construction, and also we can storage all this CO2. We, as a group of Mission DAC, we are engineering that we are trying to create these moisture stream materials that make the carbon capture possible and accessible. And moisture stream materials are kind of materials that have the ability to absorb the moisture from the environment, and they can release the moisture. By absorbing the moisture and releasing the moisture, the chemical reaction will happen, and the carbon can be captured from the environment. So why I'm specifically talking about moisture stream capture, because it has some advantages that can overcome with the limitation of the existing, the other technology. Like, other technologies are mostly expensive, and the rate of carbon capture in those are very slow, and most of them rely on the dry atmosphere. It means that we cannot use them in humid regions. And another specific advantage of moisture stream capture is that the only source that we need to drag this process is water, which is amazing. And I didn't want to talk about the, a good example, that we know that trees are doing the carbon capture every day by photosynthesis. But what moisture swings are doing is that they are accelerating, and the amount of carbon capture is higher. So in one of the simulations that we've done, the amount was like 12 micromole per meter cube second, which was bigger than what a leaf of a tree can do. And as an engineer, mechanical engineer in this project, my goal is to predict the mechanical behavior of this material. Currently, we are working with one of these material, which called FUMASAP, and I want to couple this mechanics with the chemical transport, and at the end, the final goal is to make this material less brittle and last for a longer time. And I want to thank my teammates in Mission DAC and Department of Energy for funding our project, and thank you for listening to me.
Hello, good afternoon. My name's Ma Asam Mohammed. I'm a master's student, and I'm here today to discuss my research on using unmanned aerial vehicles for target for the system. So let's first discover some of the practical application of the system. So first, the first application is in wildlife tracking, where we tagged animals with these small radio transmitters, and then on the UAV, we have some radio receivers and which can detect signals. And using these signals, we can find the location of the animals, which is a crucial task in biology and ecology studies. Also, another application is in search and rescue missions in situations such as individuals are trapped after a natural disaster or they're lost in mountains. If there is a signal emitting device next to them, we can track them or find the location rapidly. But as I said, the focus of my work is on path planning, but why does it matter? So look at this picture. Imagine trying to cover, survey this vast mountainous terrain without having a clear plan of where to go, where to send the drone. It's almost impossible to have a good estimate of the target. So that's why it matters and it's important. So I've prepared an animation to illustrate my work. So for example, here, we are trying to track three stationary targets, and as the UAV starts the mission, you can see the areas where we believe the UAV, sorry, the target is located. And as the UAV moves and collects more data, these areas shrink and converge to actual location of a target. But what is important, the point is, if we know where to send the UAV, then we'll get a good, a high, a good estimate of a target with high accuracy precision, and we can reduce the mission time. So our work makes several key contributions to the field. For example, our results show that the algorithm, the target tracking system, is able to track targets with high precision, accuracy, and minimized mission time. Also, we have incorporated some new features to the system that has not been explored in the similar problems. Also, the technology is protected under patent titled UAV Wildlife Monitoring System and Related Methods. And finally, we believe there are so many potential collaborations, opportunities across the country, and we believe this technology, this system has a lot to offer to the field. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. I am Maryam Megazeh. I am working with Dr. Day at NAU on topology optimization for brittle fracture under uncertainty. I'm going to start with some brief pictures to give you the idea of the topology optimization. So as you can see here, we want to remove material from the domain. And why do we want to cut away the material from the structure? I think these numbers can justify that. So if you can just save one kilogram in an airplane, you can save 300 to 1,000 kilograms of fuel per year. We have also these numbers in CAR, but it's less than that amount, but it's still considerable. So for example, these brackets here, we have thousands of that in an airplane. If we could just save just 10 gram of each, we can save tons of fuel per year. Beside of airplane industry or automotive industry, we have this topology optimization in satellites or in heat transfer. So now I can say that topology optimization gives the answer to the engineering question of how to place the material in a domain to obtain the best performance. You have this domain full of the material, but then you can run the topology optimization and do the algorithm and get this structure out of that. It has less amount of material, so you're saving money. A cool example of topology optimization was General Electric Aircraft Engine Bracket. This is the first structure, and they do the optimization on that. They had 600 participants in this competition, and they can remove 80% of the weight for this bracket. But years later, a group of people do the topology optimization on this structure, and they can improve the performance by another 10% of weight loss. But they were sad because they couldn't win the competition on that point. So for the topology optimization, we use the programming language called Julia, and we have the constraint of how much you want to have the material in your domain, like 30% or 40% on that. You may think that it's just a computer design, but that's not true. We have industrial applications of topology optimization. For example, Airbus used the TO on leading edge rib, or McLaren used the topology optimization for the suspension, or Ferrari F8 use double wishbone suspension, which utilized the topology optimization. Also BMW used the superbike frame, introduced superbike frame by topology optimization. And also another aspect of TO is in biomedical engineering. We have lots of implants that the main concern about them are weight or stress shielding. So they can use the topology optimization to get some structures like this. Also in construction, we can use the topology optimization in tall buildings or bridges. And as far as I know, in the Flagstaff, we can use the topology optimization at W R Gore, or even optimizing the brackets at the snowball. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Wyatt Clark. I'm the first of three students presenting on biomechanical engineering topics. The topic that I will be focusing on is a new medical device used to treat brain aneurysms. So a brain aneurysm is a deformed section of vessel that is often balloon-shaped, and with time, it can grow and eventually rupture, and that causes a hemorrhagic stroke, also known as a brain bleed. Approximately 5% of the world's population live with brain aneurysm. They're very hard to detect. There's often no signs or symptoms until they rupture. Cerebral aneurysm ruptures approximately every 18 minutes with a 50% morbidity rate, and this disease affects females disproportionately more than males. The good news is there's something that can be done. So a surgeon will take a catheter and navigate it either through the arm or the leg all the way up into the vessels of the brain, and park that catheter right at the base of the aneurysm or even inside that aneurysm. From this point, metal coils, or in the very near future, a gel, a liquid embolic material, will be injected into that aneurysm sac. And this works to stabilize the aneurysm and allows the body to heal naturally. When using coils or liquid embolics, it's often necessary to use an assistive balloon or stent-like device. A stent or a float diverter works very similarly, and it redirects blood away from that aneurysm sac. Stents are metallic devices that are left in the body forever, and this means that patients have to go on long-term blood thinning medications, which increases the risk of internal bleeding for a long time after the procedure. And balloons, while they are temporary-use devices, they block blood flow to really important parts of the brain, and this can cause complications even after the procedure. That's where the balloon mesh device comes in. The balloon mesh device is a temporary stent-like device in the shape of a balloon. It's designed to replace balloons and stents in neuro-inovascular surgery, and it's designed to jail both coil and liquid embolics. This project is being worked on in partnership with Anuvis Technologies, a local Flagstaff company that's currently operated out of the Moonshot Campus up by Buffalo Park. We received $2.6 million this past year to work on this, this technology, and we're starting preclinical animal trials later this year. Anuvis and Northern Arizona University plan to bring this technology to market in 2028. Thank you very much.
My name is Sophia, and I'm another PhD student in Dr. Tim Becker's lab, and I will be talking about how we can improve the compatibility of medical devices with the human body and some technology we're working on in this area. So metal-based implanted medical devices do not react well with the human body, and we can see three examples of metal-based medical devices that you might be familiar with in this image. The first is a pacemaker, the second image is a stent, and the third is an artificial heart valve. And although these are lifesaving medical devices, they do not react well with the human body and can lead to device rejection, stroke, or other conditions. And so how do we address this concern of the device getting rejected or causing a stroke or a heart attack or things like that? Well, coatings on the outside of the device that are highly biocompatible can actually shield the device from the body, kind of cloaking it and preventing the body from negatively reacting to the device being placed in the body. And so this is what we're working on, is a polymer material that actually cloaks the device from the body. And here are some of our preliminary results. On the left side of the screen, there, on the top left, you can see an uncoated wire kind of placed vertically, and the bottom left is a zoomed-in image of just an uncoated metal wire. In the right-hand images, you can see what this coating kind of looks like. So the top right image is the polymer coating on the wire, and then the bottom right-hand image is a zoomed-in picture of that, and you can see this interesting zigzag morphology that we think will actually improve the biocompatibility with, of this device and of this material. So in conclusion, novel medical device coatings can reduce complications such as blood clot, stroke, and heart attack, and this is what we're working on, and coatings can even improve medical device functionality, including improving healing time for bone implants and improving healing of aneurysms. So going back to what my colleague just discussed of improving that kind of healing of an aneurysm. And medical device coatings can improve patient quality of life and outcomes after surgery. This is, this project's project is being completed in partnership with Anuvis Technologies, again here in Flagstaff at the Moonshot Campus, and we'll continue to develop this coating material with a plan to commercialize in about five years. Thank you.
And I am last. Today, my name is Holly Burns, and I'm also part of Dr. Tim Becker's lab. And today I'll be talking about developing my novel mechanical thrombectomy device. So a novel thrombectomy device can be used to treat ischemic stroke. Wyatt talked about hemorrhagic stroke, which is a brain bleed. Ischemic stroke is actually when a blood clot goes in and is blocking part of the brain, preventing oxygenated blood from reaching other parts of it. Unfortunately, this is extremely common. It happens in about 800,000 Americans each year. You can think about that as the largest stadium in the United States filled eight times over. Because of the vast number of people and the devastation stroke causes, it amounts to tons of medical costs. Fortunately, there are treatments for ischemic stroke at this time. The first is a medication known as TPA, which is a clot-busting drug. Unfortunately, not every patient is eligible for this medication, and it's only about 20 to 40% effective. The second treatment option is mechanical thrombectomy. This is a minimally invasive procedure where a surgeon goes in with a catheter-based system, which is either a stent retriever, as you can see, which looks like a corkscrew or a net, or the aspiration catheter, which functions like a straw. This procedure happens to be 50 to 75% effective, so there is still some room here for development in the technology to perform this procedure. I'm tackling an aspiration catheter because it's just as effective as stent retrieval, but it's associated with lower total healthcare costs. So what's really unique about my aspiration catheter design is that I'm going to have a size adaptive tip. What this means is that it's going to be a one-size-fits-all for any patient in the world, regardless of race or sex. It's going to have a small profile to navigate into the vasculature, and then once it reaches the blood clot that it needs to remove, it's going to be able to expand in order to have the most section force possible to remove this blood clot. I'm currently in the prototyping phases of this research, and I'll be completing it in the next couple of months. I will then be performing testing in our benchtop model that we have in our lab, where you can see here, it's simulating a surgical suite, and we can incorporate 3D-printed vascular models that represent human vasculature and have very similar mechanical properties. We do this to get a good idea of how the technology is working before we enter animals or humans. Of course, research is a huge team sport, so our lab wants to thank everybody who is a part of it. And as we've stated, we work with ATI at NAU in order to get these big grants from the NIH. Thank you so much.
All right. Council members, any questions?
We do. We have some questions and some comments. First up, we have Council Member House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for those presentations. I just want to clarify the offer that you made at the beginning of this. Did you say if we could honestly say we weren't impressed or just say that we're not impressed? Like, can I lie to you?
No, please don't.
No, but in all seriousness, this is amazing work that you all are doing and extremely impressive. I don't think if I wanted to, I could lie and say that this was not amazing things that you all are doing. I can safely say that, that all of the students working on this project and on all of these projects are a million times smarter than I am, and I feel very confident in having the future in your hands. This is absolutely amazing work that you're doing. I hope that you all feel a great sense of pride and, and hope for the future that you're creating, honestly, because this is, this is truly impressive and truly impactful, especially as we were getting into some of the later presentations on treatment of brain aneurysms, compatibility of different medical devices with the human body, and treatments of strokes. Those are all medical conditions and things that have deeply impacted me and my family. And so to hear these advancements that you're making are really, really significant and meaningful, as well as hearing the other programs that were listed. I don't want to understate how impressive those were as well. I just don't understand them, but in the best way possible. I mean, you, you explain them so well, and they are all doing such important things for the future, and I, I just want to commend you all for the work that you're doing, and thank you for bringing this to us today.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, and I too just want to thank you for bringing this tonight. I have attended the Collider events. I've attended a few, and I imagine tonight only on a bigger scale. They're at a different location each month, and it's fascinating for me to learn and watch what's happening right here in Flagstaff. I mean, it is just so cool, and I really hope that we can keep forming partnerships. And what I like about the Collider events is that they're very informal, and you can talk with the presenters afterwards and ask questions. And I know that they're revamping kind of the process of when and where those happen. When we get that nailed down, I certainly hope that you bring that information to council so that we can attend. And just congratulations. I mean, the, the work you're doing, innovative, and it's, and it's in our small mountain town, and it's just fascinating. So thank you for bringing that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd be happy to pass that information along, those dates for Gravity Labs when I receive them.
Council Member Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I too just wanted to thank the students for coming here. My gosh, talk about feeling very inadequate. You guys are so smart and young, and you're doing amazing things and just changing our future and our world, and, and how exciting to have this type of research and innovation happening in our beautiful mountain town is just really inspiring, and good luck to you all. I can't wait to read about your breakthrough approvals and using your technology or your devices in the medical fields and research in the other fields in the future and just be proud to know that it happened up here. So thank you for coming to NAU, and thank you for being here in Flagstaff and your passion and the work that means so much to you. It's really impressive. Thank you.
Council Member Garcia.
Thank you, Madam. May-
.........................................................................................................................................................
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And there's not a whole lot more congratulations or thanks that could be said, but what I did want to mention is, somebody who's not as well-rounded when it comes to the biosciences, all of the presenters made me really understand what they were talking about and how effective these things could be in such a short period of time, which is really effective communication and something that I really value as a councilperson. When we're speaking to the community, we're not just speaking to the people in this room, we're speaking to all those that are at home and who will watch this meeting later. And you guys effectively communicated your point succinctly, and that goes to your training, of course. But I'd also like to invite you back to Flagstaff when you have these things into play, whether it be to live here and to, to help our community with some of the things that you do, or if you're just here for a vacation, please come back to the council chambers and let us know. So that way, young, inspiring folks could kind of see that, you know, the fruition of these ideas coming to pass. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Mayor. As a physician, I find myself very, very impressed with each of your presentations. And I'm asking myself, why haven't these ideas come up before? And I'm sure there are reasons in each individual research effort you're doing, but I want to congratulate you on asking the very basic question and then pursuing a solution. So I too am impressed, and I thank you for bringing that to us.
Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Wonderful presentations. You guys are all well on your way to your PhDs. Early congratulations for each of you. I'm, I have a soft spot for material science. I find it very fascinating. Also, as a science fiction author, I got a lot of nice little ideas that I think one could work with in terms of storytelling and, you know, the, the questions of our day in terms of, you know, moral quandaries. I have two questions. One is for you, Jeff, the other is probably for Heidi. Jeff, we just saw a federal stay on all granting, so I saw NIH come up there a few times. I'm wondering if, if you can speak at least generally about where folks' attitudes are or apprehensions are about all that. And then Heidi, I wrote it down here. Anuvis came up several times during this presentation as well. I'm not very familiar with, with that organization that's being funded through the Moonshot. I don't know if you have any, I don't want to give you a pop quiz. All right, David's the one to answer that. That's great. Just want to learn a little bit more about them, how long they've been funded by Moonshot.
To your, your first question, my crystal ball happens to be broken, and, and so trying to anticipate what OMB may, may or may not do with that directive is really up in the air. It's, you know, no one, unless, unless you're a White House staffer, no one really knows where they intend to go with that. It will affect grant applications and grant funding. For how long, I cannot tell you. So, sorry, I don't have a better answer.
That's okay. I was mostly just invoking the topic.
Sure.
You're not really under the microscope there.
Good afternoon. Dave McIntyre, Community Investment Director. Anuvis has been up at Moonshot. They're not actually funded through Moonshot, but they are up at the NAC campus. They're a part of Moonshot, as in, they, they work up there and they're a tenant up there, but we don't actually put direct funding through to them. But they are one of, a number of scientific organizations and businesses that are up there that are doing great research and development work and creating products. They are a business we're super proud to have in the facility, and they are benefiting from the investment that the council made in having an incubator and accelerator up there to help local biomedical businesses thrive. In terms of their specific projects, I bet somebody who just presented would be able to speak to that better than I would, because he's part of a partnership with them. They don't necessarily share their proprietary information with me. We just work to help make sure they have the supports they need to thrive as a business. And so they do receive business support services through Moonshot. Not specific funding, but business support services, and my understanding is they're, they're doing great work. Whoever, which, which person was partnering with Anuvis?
I'm the partner.
Do you, do you want to add anything to that, or do you feel comfortable with that as an answer?
I didn't know how many words to say.
That was a beautiful answer.
That was a good answer.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, I don't need to dig too deep there. I just wanted to sort of lift that up because it was mentioned a few times, and sounds like a wonderful, positive example of success in terms of the facilitation that we're able to provide as a city trying to attract biomedical industry into town. I hope that continues.
It really is exciting what's happening up there, as well as what's happening at NAU. And anytime anybody on council wants to take a tour of those facilities and meet some of those businesses, I'm sure we could set that up. And so grateful to have the caliber of academics and, and students that are at NAU also contributing to the science done in our business community, too. Thank you.
I would share the kudos that has been given to you all. I mean, what, we, we know that having NAU in our community has so many benefits, and you have illustrated many of them tonight. And the benefit of having Moonshot here and the collaboration that can happen is, it's always exciting to hear what's going on at Moonshot. I too am concerned about how the freezing of the grants might impact your work, as well as the work of the city. And I think it demonstrates just how much we rely on federal partners for the work that we do in our communities. So fingers crossed for that. And Wyatt, I just have to say, it's so good to see you. It does my heart proud. All right. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Councilmember House, if you want to have lunch, you know where to find me.
We are moving on to the next item. I don't know if you all want to stay or if you would like to leave, but you are welcome to leave. You do not, you're not held hostage here for the rest of the meeting if you'd like to leave. So our next discussion, item number eight, is Discussion and Direction: Use of the Council Initiative Fund. And Stacy, are you kicking this off?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Stacy Salzberg, I am the Communication and Civic Engagement Director, and I also serve as your city clerk. So I'm here before you today because we've had a couple of requests for the use of our council initiative fund. For the benefit of our new council members, I'd just like to provide a little bit of history on kind of the establishment of this fund, what we use it for, and then look to you for some discussion. So the fund was established as part of the 2020-2021 budget, and it was established for the ability for council to approve any unforeseen expenditures that, from time to time, tend to come up. And this could include things that are, it's a broad range, if you will. We have supported the sponsorship of a planet at the Lowell Discovery Center. We have contributed to the Out of the Darkness Walk just recently.
It wasn't just any planet. It was Earth.
It was the planet. Other sponsorships have, or other uses of this fund have also gone to support after-school programming. So it's just a really, it's a fund that is available to you as council to help kind of further different community initiatives that you see fit. $25,000 is allocated annually to this fund, and it doesn't roll over or accumulate, if you will. So essentially, it's just a new allocation each year of $25,000. So that's kind of the, the context behind this fund, what it has been used for. And as long as we can get, you know, an agreement from council and an official kind of action to move things forward, we're happy to make those expenditures on your behalf. So currently, we have $14,500 available in this fund, this current fiscal year. We've already allocated some, some of our funding to other initiatives. So at this point, we have received a request to support the Flagstaff Big Read 2025. This came from Councilmember House, I believe, last week. And then Councilmember Aslan had made some references a few conversations ago with regard to this fund about sponsoring or providing some sponsorship to the Coconuts. And they are embarking on some travels this year that include California, here in Arizona, Miami, and also their world championship in Houston to kind of celebrate their induction into the Hall of Fame. So they're looking to have perhaps any sort of sponsorship that might come from the council. So with that, I'll turn it over to you to discuss those two items. We're also agendized in a way that if there are other things that the council would like to consider for the use of this fund, you guys have the ability to have that conversation as well.
Thank you. Councilmember House, would you like to kick it off?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So the Flagstaff Big Read is coming up actually very quickly. They are kicking things off next month in February, and it's running through April. When Jamie Paul came and presented to council, they shared the desire to find sponsorship for the purchase of the community read there there, and, which I will never say again without laughing about it, Councilmember Aslan. But I believe the, the ask was around $1,400 for the purchase of those books, and that, that total, I think, is inclusive of the tax. I think when she presented, she said around 1,200-something plus tax. In the literature and flyer for the event, she shared the total of about $1,400 in book purchases for the 2025 season. They have a lineup of speakers and facilitators who have all committed to serving as volunteers for the season to reduce the cost of, of programming. They're partnering with the Southside Community Association and several other organizations, including the Northern Arizona Book Festival, NACA, Brightside, CCC, NAU, Culture Connections, the Literacy Center, and the library system. So this is a really big opportunity to speak into a collective experience for the community and a, a major partnership between a lot of these organizations that are bringing not only a big read to our community, but also big ideas and, and big opportunities to engage. So I would love to see us support this if we can, and we can talk about the amount after maybe Councilmember Aslan shares information on his program. And I think I saw in the chat, Councilmember Sweet may also have another proposal.
Thank you. Councilmember Aslan, do you have something to add?
Well, I'll begin by chatting a little bit about the, the Big Read. That was two weeks ago that that request came in, and I do have some thoughts on that. You may remember two weeks ago during Two From, when it was my, my turn to talk, I sort of hesitated for a moment. I was wondering if I should announce support for the Big Read then as an, as a, as a fair. And I hesitated and didn't do it, and it's because I, I wanted to learn a little bit more about it. My, my, my hangup is that I have some experience with this. I know that when, when you just give books away, they're not valued. They tend to just be tossed to the side or put at the bottom of your nightstand, and they're never really looked at. Now, if, if they're not just given away, but there's a targeted approach where there's a programming assisted with it, and you're looking at specific students, and there's follow-up, providing a book for free is an amazing opportunity to support literacy and education, and in this case, diversity awareness. I, I'm not familiar with the book, but what I've looked up about it, it seems like a very appropriate and region-appropriate read for young people around town. So I, I, I would like to know a little bit more about how the books are being distributed. At this point, I think I can trust that the Big Read sort of understands that, that dynamic and probably has some answers to those questions that I have. So I'm, I'm happy to support moving this forward. I, I would start with the suggestion that we support what they asked for, which is 1,400 some odd dollars. The other thing I kind of wanted to invoke, bring up during this conversation is, is my, my preference for, for spending this money is that these ideas come from council, not from a request done at Public Comment. I'm worried about the precedent that could send. And, you know, the easy fix to that is, is for interested members of the public who are curious about whether or not we might sponsor them, should find a council member, pick a council member, and have that conversation privately first, and allow the council member to announce those opportunities to the rest of the group and to make that argument. Otherwise, we could blow through this $25,000 very, very quickly with a revolving door and a line of 30 requestees coming down the aisle. So I just, I just want to be careful of that. I think, you know, in my mind, if this was something that Jamie had come to me about, I would have brought it forward. So it's kind of consistent with, with my own, you know, the, the, the decision-making process I would make for supporting this sort of thing. So that's where I'm at with that. I do hope we can find some money, an amount, I'm not particular to what that amount might be, for the Coconuts. I appreciate you going back and doing a little bit of research and, and giving us something to, to, specific to chew on, which is their, their travel budget for some of the things they're going to be doing. You know, and this group really does represent Flagstaff, and we are proud to have them out there representing us as a community through their award-winning and really eye-popping innovation and smarts when it comes to electronics. And, you know, the, these are, these are middle school and high school kids that we're talking about. We're doing incredible things with robotics. And as a STEAM community, we should absolutely be supporting that whenever we can. Again, I don't have an amount that I have in mind, but I do think that this is an appropriate allocation among all the other things that we might support over the year. And just to add, Stacy, to what you were saying, for the new council members who might not have had this conversation several times, these, these requests can come up anytime. You can make them throughout the year. I think there's sort of an unspoken sensibility on council that we're, that we're not going to spend all $25,000 on January 1st, because opportunities arise throughout the year that we might want to be responsive to, but that these conversations are ongoing, and you're, you're welcome to think through that anytime you want to, and, you know, have the community approach you, or if it's something that's close to you, you can approach an interest group and, and work out the details yourself before you come to council with a proposal. Just a lot of flexibility in the way this is rolled out.
Vice Mayor Sweet.
Thank you, and thank you to Councilmember House and Aslan. I like both of those. And I am bringing one forward myself. I was talking with Hunter, who is the head of the Downtown Business Alliance, and trying to think of different partnership opportunities that we can, can do with our downtown. And the one I picked was Movies on the Square. But there are a host of other ones, like Music on the Square, seasonal events. But I wanted to go with something that really benefited our community and gave us a chance as city council to go out and, and, and be part of the community that's there at Movies on the Square. As you know, our downtown is, is very vital to the success of Flagstaff. We have a lot of visitors and residents. The DBA hosts different events in the downtown, attracting over 150,000 residents and visitors. And it makes a huge economic impact on Flagstaff. And as someone who loves our downtown, I treasure- And as someone who loves our downtown, I treasure all of those free, family-friendly events that they host. But it doesn't come for free to the DBA. I mean, they need to pay for these events, and they are on a tight shoestring budget. And so Hunter's really getting creative and trying to figure out ways to get sponsorship so that these amazing benefits to the community can continue. So I printed out for those in the audience, everyone on the day has has a printout of the Movies on the Square, and I kind of went down to the cinema category. And Hunter is very flexible on what we can do. This is just kind of an outline. It would include a ten-by-ten exhibit space at three different events, our logo on all promotional materials, a website logo, feature in the newsletter, spotlight on radio spots and press releases, and on-screen logo display. And then I asked Hunter, well, can we include kind of like a commercial or a video? And I spoke with Heidi Hansen briefly about the video that talks about being good stewards in Flagstaff. It has Daryl Marks in it, and it's just such a heartwarming video. We would be able to play that. And again, this is flexible, but I think that this is something that I'm passionate about, and I believe it's something that benefits the entire community. And I would really love to have support in either Movies on the Square. I can talk more about the other categories, but this is one where I thought council really could give back and get involved at those movies, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Austin or Stacy, has the Coconuts shared their budget, their estimated cost for their travel?
Not with me specifically. They indicated that they would be happy with any amount that might be suggested, but no.
Okay. So I like all three of these, and it just really hits on different aspects of our community and what we really, you know, want to support and promote. And I was thinking, I was going to throw out a number of twenty-five hundred dollars for the Coconuts. That would leave us, if we funded the fourteen hundred for the Big Read, if everybody agreed to twenty-five hundred for Coconuts, and three thousand for Movies on the Square, that would still leave us seventy-six hundred dollars in that fund. And one other question, are we talking calendar year, or do we get a reset July first?
July first. It's on a fiscal year.
So we only have six months. I mean, the seventy-six hundred dollars left over would be available to us for six months, and then it resets, correct?
Correct.
So that's my kind of support and vote and suggestion.
Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you for those thoughts, Councilmember Matthews. You know, I just, I do want to mention one thing. I'm all for Movies on the Square. I'm all for supporting Hunter and the DBA. In fact, we've done that before. Last year, we used some of these funds to support Movies on the Square, and we sponsored an evening, and council had an opportunity to be out there and kind of showcase ourselves during that event. I have said before that one of my operating principles on this funding, and this is for myself, this isn't a hard and fast rule for anybody else, is that I'm reluctant to fund the same thing several years in a row. I don't want any one group getting dependent on the initiative fund as something they start to rely on on a yearly basis. And I think there are enough things going on in the community that we are, we should be spreading the wealth around, so to speak, for lack of a better term, as much as possible. Now, that doesn't mean that I'm going to shut down this idea. I just wanted to point out that this was something that was recently funded. I can tell that Hunter's put a lot of thought into this, and he's changed the way it works a little bit, and it's kind of on a different, you know, there's a different feel to it. So that's an interesting aspect to this. There's also, you know, other ways we could support DBA with downtown things as well. It sounds like you mentioned a couple of them, the music program and some other things. So I just wanted to throw that observation and that hesitation into the mix.
Councilmember Garcia.
I appreciate that perspective, Councilmember Aslan. Understanding the idea of keeping monies open for other ideas, I think, is poignant in most situations. I will be supporting the Movies on the Square this time around. I saw the benefit to many groups inside the city of Flagstaff. In particular, we saw some commissions that were able to go out there and express themselves. I think it's one of our greatest community assets and where I see the most people gather at once. So I appreciate that for this time around, for sure, for myself. I also had a little bit of a question. I'm kind of new to this. So I added up the fourteen, the twenty-five, and the three thousand, got sixty-nine hundred with the seventy-six hundred, adds fourteen-five. Could you update me on what the other ninety-five hundred is already being used for?
I knew you were going to ask that question, and unfortunately, I don't have that direct answer. I'd have to go back and look. There was twenty-five hundred dollars.
An email would suffice.
Okay. I believe "Out of the Darkness" was one of them, because that was in November, I believe. So that would have been, I think that might have been the twenty-five hundred dollar.
Was the firefighter thing this time around too, the therapy?
That was last year. I'll follow up with an email. I apologize that I don't have that.
And then Councilmember Harris's proposal around after-school programming, was that this time around?
Yeah, I believe that was last year as well.
That's no problem. We can follow up through the email with that one. It was just a curiosity, and in the moment, I had that question. Also, since we were, since I'm new to this, I didn't reach out to the folks that I thought maybe I could or should, because I didn't understand how the process works. Now that I understand, I'll be ready for next year, but for now, I want to support all of these wonderful ideas. And we still have some time, yeah. So I appreciate that. But I would like to support all of these ideas and think that they're wonderful, and thank you all for bringing them up.
Councilmember House.
Thank you. Great conversation so far. I did just want to circle back, Councilmember Aslan, to one of the things that you said on the Big Read. And I don't mean this to be a call-out or anything like that, so please don't hear it that way, but just thinking about the comment on the valuing of books that are given away for free, I just think of my own experience growing up and not having access to books at cost, you know, and the implication of having access to not just a book that's being given to you for whatever purpose, but the intentionality behind a program like this that's bringing community together for that sort of reading program. I always picture for myself being, you know, that kid in the school when they had the scholastic books out and never being able to get a book, and being a voracious reader and relying on the ability of a parent to take me to the library, or my dad worked at a bookstore for a while, so we got the, I probably shouldn't actually reveal that part, but, you know, the covers torn off versions of books and things like that. But having that sort of access is very, very meaningful for people that wouldn't have that sort of access otherwise, and I just wanted to speak to that a bit. At the same time, I also wanted to just recognize what you said about ensuring that there's, you know, the planning and the programatics that go behind the program. And haven't spoken with Jamie a bit more behind the scenes on this. I believe that that's there. I believe they have a plan for the distribution, and so that's really where I felt strongly to be able to bring this forward. I agree on what Councilmember Matthews proposed on the, sorry, the Coconuts. And yes, I would like to support the Movies on the Square as well. Yeah, and I think that's it.
Thank you. Okay. So I am in the same place. I support all three and love that they are all so different, and what a wonderful way to, for us to engage with the community. And I, one thing that I really like about the Movies on the Square is being able to have a table there, and water services was there for every movie, I think, that we did last time. And so I hope that, I hope that staff will take advantage of that opportunity and let us help if you need some help, because I recognize you already work forty-plus hours every week. But I support all three. Councilmember House.
Actually, thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up, and that just raised the thought for me. I know that during Movies on the Square, we'll kind of be well into the summer months, but thinking about the calls that we've seen for further community education on firewise and ready, set, go, and all of those things, that seems like a really good opportunity to also be able to share that information out publicly if the police, or, excuse me, the fire department and other related teams would be open to that.
All right. So are we all in agreement? So fourteen hundred for the Big Read, twenty-five hundred for Coconuts, and three thousand for Movies on the Square? All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, council.
Thanks, Stacy.
Just for your knowledge, I will actually be bringing this back as a consent item to get your full approval on, just due to the timing. We wanted to get this in front of you quickly, so look for that on a future agenda.
Thank you. All right. We're moving down to item number nine, presentation on civil rights and the 2024 Municipal Equality Index. Hello, Mr. Rhodey.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. So thank you again, Mayor, members of council. This is a presentation I try to give about once a year or so, roughly in January or February, with enough time after the publication of the Annual Municipal Equality Index Scorecard by the Human Rights Campaign. I gave a very similar presentation about a month ago to the Commission on Diversity Awareness, and now I'm giving it to you all just for your information, and I'll take any questions as I go. So I am going to cover two different topics in this presentation. The first will be an outline of our ordinance in the city of Flagstaff, go through what it covers and what the complaint process for violations look like in our city, and then I'll look at the scorecard we got from the Human Rights Campaign covering the year 2024. It was published, I think, right around the week of Thanksgiving or so is when it was made public. So our ordinance bars discrimination for classes and in certain settings. So it applies to employers, labor organizations, and public accommodations. Your employer essentially is, you know, you can't be denied a job or fired or demoted or anything in your employment because of a protected class. And a public accommodation essentially is anywhere that you could go as a member of the general public and expect to receive services. So think of like a hotel or a restaurant, anywhere you can go and just expect that I can give you a bit of money and you can get a good or service and we're going to exchange from it. There are a few exemptions under our ordinance that are explicit. So Native American reservations, which have their own sovereign nations, are exempt. Private clubs that you have to pay to be a member of are exempt. The federal and state governments are exempt. There's an exemption for unruly behavior in public, so that means that you can't go somewhere, like to a restaurant, act to fool yourself and get yourself thrown out for accosting an employee or something like that, and then claim that it was because of your belonging to one of those classes. There's, if you're going to act up in public, they can kick you out, essentially. Religious organizations are exempt as there are senior and student discounts. So if you go to a restaurant or somewhere and they have a discount for seniors or students, that's not against our ordinance. We have an explicit exemption for one-gender gyms and for uniforms at certain workplaces that can be required. In Flagstaff, this is a list of all of the classes that are protected, so you cannot be discriminated for your belonging or your identification in any of these classes. It includes a lot of the ones you'll see under state and federal protections as well, race, color, religion, sex, age, disability, veteran status, national origin. But those last three are unique to Flagstaff. It's sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. I'll say that some other folks have, other organizations, rather, have claimed that sexual orientation falls underneath sex. We just call it out on its own, just as a precaution, in case someone doesn't see it that way. Now, if we get a complaint that someone has been discriminated against on one of these bases, this is the general process we go through, going from left to right. A blue is an action item, so the complaint gets filed. Immediately, we reach out to the respondent, that's the alleged violator, whether it's a restaurant or a business or someone else, essentially to get their side of the story. We review it to make sure that it was filed on time. They have a hundred and eighty days to file that. We changed that just a couple of years ago here, up from ninety days. We make sure that the city is the right person to take this complaint, and we make sure that the content, if it were true, so essentially just assume that it's true without any evidence or investigating, if it was a hundred percent true, would it be a violation? And if the answer is no to any of those three, we can dismiss it right then. That's the red option when the complaint ends. If any of those are true, we go to mediation, so we sit the parties down, try to get them to come to an agreement on what happens and what should happen in response to it. Hopefully, that's where we get an agreement. That's the nice green box there. That's the best-case outcome. If not, then we refer to an investigator who looks into the facts of the case, determines what happens or determines what they think actually happened. And at that point, the mediation's probably not likely to come back again, so either they would dismiss it or they would file the matter in court, in our municipal court. So that's another review of our ordinance now. It works. I'll get into the municipal quality index now. So this is a scorecard that's released every year by the Human Rights Campaign. They have one for businesses as well. You may have seen the one for businesses that they look at, but they look at cities all around the country, and they look at how well their laws and their policies and the services they provide to the community do at creating a welcoming and equitable environment for folks. And they especially are looking for members of the LGBTQ+ community, so they look for gender identity and sexual orientation for a lot of their points. There's five hundred and six cities nationwide that they've evaluated in this. Eleven of those are in the state of Arizona, we're one of those eleven, and the scores are out of a hundred, but it's really out of a hundred and twenty-two. What I say is kind of they stopped counting at a hundred, but you can actually get a hundred and twenty-two points. They would just stop counting at a hundred. So it's a hundred points and twenty-two are flex points, and I would be honest in telling you that I have no idea how a flex point is different than a normal point. I've inquired about that. They're scored exactly the same. I really don't know why they make that differentiation there. The scorecards are broken down into five categories. They look at our laws. They look at how the city does as an employer, so looking at the policies for those of us that are employees. It looks at the services that are provided to the public. It looks at our police department specifically, and then it looks at efforts by leadership would be all of you, essentially, to see what you're doing in your personal, professional capacities to further equality in our community. So this year, we ended up with a score of ninety-five out of a hundred. This is the same score we got last year, so two years in a row with the same score. That doesn't mean there weren't changes. We actually lost points and gained points elsewhere. So we gained one point for being a better employer, and we lost a point for the leadership's efforts on LGBTQ equality, and I'll get into exactly what those were for. So we, that's the breakdown of how we got there, eighty-one out of a hundred, and then fourteen additional points from flex points out of the possible twenty-two. Those track pretty similarly in terms of the percentages that we're getting out of each of those. Here's a new graph I'm doing this year, so you can see that we are on the upswing on this. We've put a lot of time and effort into this over the last several years of documenting our programs and giving good submissions to them to show what we're doing. We've made a few changes that have helped our score as well, and right now, we're sitting at ninety-five. So some of the key areas that we lose points in, our, our nondiscrimination ordinance does not cover housing. I'll talk about all of these in a little more detail. We lose one point in single occupancy all-gender facilities. We did not get every point possible for transgender-inclusive healthcare benefits. And if you've heard me before, I've talked about that pretty extensively. We lose some points for the way our ordinance is enforced. We lose points for not having a comprehensive youth bullying prevention policy. We lose points for some of the leadership's pro-equality efforts. We lose points for not having an openly LGBTQ plus elected or appointed leaders. And I've got a little asterisk, asterisk on that one because that's one that I want to, I want to highlight as a very unique one that I want to talk about in its own, its own way here in a second. And then they could give us additional points for testing the limits of state laws. I also wanted to point out some of the areas that we gain points, not just to be negative because we're doing a lot of really good things for our community. And I'll note on, on that that it's important to use this scorecard not as trying to get exactly a hundred and twenty-two points, but it is one of many tools we can use to evaluate how well we are doing as an organization of providing these services and, and being this employer and all those things to our community. So there's areas where the job we're doing is not necessarily reflected perfectly by the points, but it's a tool that we want to look at regardless. So I put transgender, transgender-inclusive healthcare benefits on the areas we receive points, and you'll notice that was on the last slide as well because that's a big thing that we've been working on the last couple of years, and we've made some great progress. I'll talk about there. But then there's some, there's some services that we've been able to document that are through largely our library and our housing programs that give us a lot of these points in areas that other, that other cities around the state and in the nation did not get them in. So it's providing services to the LGBTQ plus youth, providing services to LGBTQ plus individuals experiencing homelessness, providing services to older adults specifically, providing services to those living with HIV and AIDS, and providing services that are specific to the transgender community. So the first item here that we did not receive points for is not having housing as a portion of our nondiscrimination ordinance. And I mentioned it covers public accommodations and it covers employment, but it does not cover housing. The reason for that is that we're not allowed to. There's a, we're barred by the state from including that from a law back in the nineteen nineties. There was a time, there was a window where cities with populations over three hundred and fifty thousand people were allowed to make certain changes to these kinds of ordinances. Obviously, the city of Flagstaff is not that size even today, and they were required to be adopted before January first of nineteen ninety-five. So it's been thirty years, and that window has not opened since then with a way that we're able to add that in any kind of meaningful way. Only three cities in Arizona received these points. It was Phoenix, Tucson, and Tempe. So for actions that we could take on this, without the state changing that preemption, there's really nothing that we can do. The second one is for single occupancy all-gender facilities. I'll note there's been some change on this in recent, recent years. City Council gave a direction to require all-gender facilities in every city-owned facility a couple of years ago, and we've done that. So City Hall, our Public Works, every building the city owns now has an all-gender facility. We, in order to get that second point, though, we would have to require it citywide, and that's a lot bigger. I'll note that this, we have adopted a version of the International Building Code that requires these in commercial buildings. So we'll see over the course of time as buildings get added to our community, or they're upgraded, subsize, substantial changes are made, that they will, will see them a lot, in a lot more places, but without an actual ordinance. And, and the, the Human Rights Campaign was specific that the building code is not enough. We would need an actual ordinance for this in order to get that second point. But it's an area that, again, it, it's happening kind of slowly, and you'll see as buildings change that you'll see more of these. So they are entering our community, and they'll be more widespread. We just don't get the second point on the scorecard. So providing transgender-inclusive healthcare benefits, this is an area that we worked really hard on over the last couple of years. We've been, essentially what it came down to is that we've always provided the, we've provided these benefits for many years, but they aren't, they have not been spelled out very clearly in our plan books that go to city employees that list all the healthcare coverages. So we've been working with Blue Cross Blue Shield, our, our healthcare provider, for the last couple of years, and we were finally able to convince them to add this to our plan book last year. We were really happy about that. We sent some language back and forth, but it was sent out to employees, and that language is now in the plan book. So we were really hopeful in sending that this year to the Human Rights Campaign. I was really, I was looking for a six on this when it came back. What they told us is that they, we only got one point, and we're capped at getting one point because of a state preemption on transgender-affirming healthcare for minors. So essentially, what they said is that because city employees may have minor dependence on those healthcare plans, who would not be able to access that kind of care, doesn't count as getting all the points, and we only got one point for that. We talked about whether one out of six was the right number, and they, they said that was the standard they're applying nationwide. I did check as well in other cities, we're getting that same point. So without that state prohibition going away, we'd be capped at one. But if the state were to lift that prohibition, I presume we would go to all six. But it, but I do want to point out that that's an area that we've made progress on, and we're better serving our, our employees because we have that in the plan book now, and we're communicating it better. So the Human Rights Campaign on, on this area would like to see the nondiscrimination ordinance to be enforced by our Commission on Diversity Awareness. So the NDO, it's enforced by the City Manager's Office and my civil rights office that I, that I run through the City Manager's Office. And like most commissions, the Commission on Diversity Awareness, which I'm also the staff liaison for, is a advisory and educational in, in nature. That, that's kind of what its mandate is. It's meant to try to provide education to the public and then to provide advice to you all as you make policy decisions. So it, it would be kind of out of the ordinary for it to function in this kind of more procedural administrative way. And I'll also note that just having the Commission on Diversity Awareness, having that entity set up, does actually give us points elsewhere. Just having a commission that does that gives us two points elsewhere on the scorecard. So if you really wanted these two points, and you thought it was important, the way you'd get them would be to look at giving code a little bit more authority in enforcing that. I'll note that I do, as the staff liaison, I work with them pretty closely, and not having them that involved in the process has never been a barrier to providing that service to the community. Our youth bullying prevention policy for city services, this is an area that's probably, probably the one that we're looking at most closely for trying to get points going forward. So you get one point each on this item if you include sexual orientation, and one point for gender identity as being protected classes underneath it. We would look to do that if we, if we go forward with this. We have this language, this kind of anti-bullying policy, but it's at the program level. So if you sign up for swimming lessons, when you sign the documents for that, that program will have a policy. If you sign up for a program at the Aquaplex, well, I guess that'd probably be swimming lessons, but that would be something similar. So all the programs individually have their own, their own policy in this, but we're looking to make something that would be citywide and more encompassing. And a note on this as well is that they look at it for youth. We're looking at doing this regardless of age because our staff and participants and programs of all ages deserve to be free from this kind of bullying. So we'd be looking to make that a little bit more comprehensive moving forward. Hopefully, we'll have something on that this year. We don't necessarily need it to be an ordinance. A city manager directive may work as well, so we're going to look at that as a possibility. But we're going through the process to make sure we draft it properly and that we have buy-in from all the programs and all the division directors are on board with it as well. So this is something we're looking at, but it's still in the works. So leadership's pro-equality legislative or policy efforts, this is possibly the most subjective criteria, rubric they have. Every year, we put together a collection of things that you all do. So we had some documentation from last year's Pride Parade. We will look through and note any prevalent social media posts or, or discussions that happen here at this dais and try to submit that. But then we just kind of get what we get, and this year we got one out of three for it. So I don't really have much more to say than that. They can't really tell us why they didn't give us more on that, but it's, it's subjective, and we do our best to document those kind of things. But that's what, an area that we've lost points, two, two points for the last couple of years. Now, this is an area, this is one I wanted to talk about a little bit more. So having an openly LGBTQ plus elected or appointed leader. We got this for many years, and last year, for 2023, was the first year that we did not receive these points, which was a little surprising because it was not an election year. So no one on city council changed that year. There was no significant staff turnover in positions we thought they could have been looking at. So we don't know exactly why we were getting them in the first place. We have some suspicions, suspicions I'm not going to air publicly in, at this dais, but we have some ideas of why maybe we're getting these points. And they've said that unless there is a person that is by themselves openly LGBTQ on council or in the highest city administration, they would not get these points. We express some concerns about this based on the conversation last year. I had a whole conversation with the Human Rights Campaign on this item where we kind of told them that we're not going to go asking anybody what their sexual orientation is. We're not going to try to solicit that from anybody. That's not the kind of employer and workplace we want to be. And we kind of told them that we, we don't think that encouraging that kind of line of questioning is, is the way we want to go about things. And so we kind of told them that we're not going to attempt to get these points. If, if a member of council decides that you want to do something of your own volition, you're welcome to do that. I, that's up to you. But that's kind of your own personal business, and we as city staff are not going to make a policy of asking those kinds of questions. They kind of told us, they heard what we were saying, and then, you know, that's kind of as far as the conversation led to, is they appreciated our, our feedback, and that was, that was kind of a relented. So once again, we did not get these two points. This last item here is testing the limits of a restrictive state law. So this is kind of a carrot they like to dangle out for some of those cities that have, are losing points elsewhere for state preemptions. Just, it, it's kind of an incentive to take on the state government, and the city Flagstaff is not doing that at this time with any of those kinds of things. Only one, only one city in Arizona got these points. It was, it was Tempe. I, I don't know what they're doing, but they are doing something that Human Rights Campaign wanted to give them three extra points for, and some kind of action with the state. So that is every area that we are not receiving points. On this year's scorecard, we lost one point on the policy efforts from the, from appointed and elected leaders, and we gained one point for the transgender-inclusive healthcare. And as I mentioned, we try to look at this through a lens of how good are we actually doing at providing these services to our community? How can we do better? And our goal next year is going to be to continue documenting things and look to get a larger citywide anti-bullying policy on the books somewhere. With that, I'll, I'll take any questions anybody has on the.
Thank you. We have Councilmember Spence.
Yes. Perhaps I missed this in your presentation, but on the first part of your presentation where you outlined complaints, how many complaints were received in the last year, and how does that compare with previous years?
Yeah. So the numbers are pretty small for complaints. I, I think we had one last year, maybe two. I did not include that in here because that's usually about what it is. It's about one a year approximately, maybe give or take, but it, it's really around that range. We had one last year that actually went a little bit further in the process than we'd seen before. We had never gotten a mediation before we got to that stage with it last year. And it, it's very common, I'll say, for us to receive complaints and then dismiss them for the, for one of those three items, either they're not filed in the right jurisdiction, they're not timely, or they wouldn't be, wouldn't constitute a violation, and, or, or to dismiss them on the grounds that, you know, they were being unruly in a public place, or something like that. So usually, we don't get to that first step, but we did have one last year that, that made it a little bit further.
On another, on the latter half of your presentation, this agency that does the Municipal Equality Index, is it a nonprofit? At what level of our society does that rating agency stand?
Yes, it, it is a nonprofit organization. They're a national organization. It's called the Human Rights Campaign. So their, their logo, it's a, it's a blue logo with a yellow equal sign in the middle. You may have seen that around. But they, they're very active in, in this kind of field at the state, federal, and local levels. This is one of their projects.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for this presentation. This is my second time, I think, hearing it from you, so I won't go into any of the questions that I've, I've had the opportunity to ask you before. And I want to ask this one in as, as easy a way to answer as possible so that you don't have to get into anything that you're uncomfortable expounding on. But have you had any word on the status of the index, given some of the, the recent executive orders that we've seen come out? Is this looking to continue, or?
So I, I've not heard anything on this one specifically. I, I did see an article, what, last month or so, that talked about how on the business one they do, that looks at how good businesses are at this as opposed to cities, that a lot of, there were, there were a substantial number of businesses that were saying they were not going to submit anymore for it, but that's a private sector kind of thing. So I, I have not received any word on how it would change the public side of things. I imagine some scores could be impacted by applicable laws changing, but I, that's all I can, all I can say on it.
Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, Chris. I really do appreciate all the work you put into this. You do it very quietly throughout the year, but it's there in case it's needed. And perhaps it's more important than ever that we are able to take control of our own destiny when it comes to making value-based decisions on these things. You know, it's fortuitous that we're having this conversation this week. And by fortuitous, I mean, it's, it's a, it's random and by chance rather than by good fortune. Councilmember House invoked, I'm using that word a lot today, it, it, the, the things that are going on at the national level. I didn't get an answer to the question that, the specific question that I had during that conversation, and that is, how, how much are federal strings attached to this, to this program? Is the nonprofit completely private, you know, funded by other means? I'm just wondering if you're willing to speculate at all on the, on the future of this and how it's being disrupted, and if you have any feelings on the utility of it moving forward. Again, I kind of expressed my thinking on this, which leans toward, well, it, you know, if the federal government's going to drop the ball on these things, at least we have local municipalities that are willing to keep it going. But there could be some threats involved with that in and of itself. I don't want to get too much into it, but I'm wondering if you can speak to that at all, if you're willing to speculate on some of those things. And then also, I just wanted to make the comment that I completely agree with your critique of one of those scores. It's, you know, it's, it's one thing for a scorecard to ask for appointed leaders to have a certain status. That's a worthy conversation in and of itself because we're not, we're not in a position to ask to out anybody. And that shouldn't be a qualification or a reason for an appointment anyway. But when it comes to elected officials, the city has absolutely no business trying to pull the levers or manipulate the outcome of elections. That's up to the electorate. And maybe an argument could be made that the city needs to be providing a, you know, a substrate out there in the community that's more inclined to be receptive to electing and LGBTQ plus candidates and/or, you know, causing those candidates to rise up in the, in the electorate to present themselves. But it's, it's really not the city's place. It's not their authority. It's not, it's, it's not in our purview to, to champion candidates to get them elected. It just, it just seems very far afield of what, what an index like this should be focused on. I'll leave those comments there. Looking forward to hearing what you have to say. I hope I gave you a few seconds to think about it.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I'll do my best to answer those in the order that they were asked. And if I missed one of those, please feel free to correct me, and I'll try to go back to it. So the Human Rights Campaign is a national nonprofit. I, I can't say definitively whether or not they receive federal funding. I don't believe that they do, but I, I don't want to say that definitively on the record and that it can be held against me if I'm wrong on it. As far as the current As far as the current federal administration and some of their policies affecting this, this, I, I think that the way I would be, I would most expect it to see this effect, and I'm going to speculate as little as I can here because I don't like to speculate. But so, a similar way to the way our state administration rolled over a couple of years ago with a new, a new governor taking office. That administration enacted an executive order that banned conversion therapy statewide, and then we suddenly got those points on our, our scorecard. So, we at the city did absolutely nothing on that, and we got two more points. So, in that way, the scorecard is meant to be a reflection of what life is like in a place. So, even though we didn't do it, it was now unlawful to, for that to happen here. So, it can happen at the local level, the state level, or the federal level. So, if the federal government or the state government were to add any new prohibitions or anything, that could be reflected if it becomes something that impacts our programs here. I, I can tell you that the Civil Rights Office itself is not paid for with any grants or anything that would be affected by the most recent order today that I believe has already been, had a court case happen or something. I don't know. That's not my area. But, and so, our office is not, doesn't receive any funding that would be affected by that. Some of the programs that we provide through housing and other things, I don't have those budget numbers in front of me, but it's possible that that would be an area where we would see an effect is in our ability to provide some of these, but I don't want to, that's as much as I want to speculate. I don't want to go any further than that.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I thank you, Chris, for doing the work that you're doing with this. I had a couple of questions that, I had a bit of a problem kind of wrapping my head around the summaries just because I wasn't familiar with the program itself. So, it's not a stain on staff. It's really just my own learning curve here. So, I was wondering how much, how much, I see a great benefit to the, to, to our organization for using this. Over time, have you seen a great benefit for this, and can you kind of explain that to me a little?
Yeah, so, I've been doing, I think this last year was the fourth time I did the submission to the Human Rights Campaign on this topic, maybe, maybe third. I'm not positive of that number, one of those. And each time, I've gotten more familiar with what they're looking for. It's allowed us to have conversations where we have questions. So, it, it, it's, it's allowed my office to, to kind of develop more connections with other areas of our city as we've looked for areas that we can submit. So, I've become more in tune with the programs we, we provide and kind of the things that are happening in our city, and that's certainly a benefit. It's spurred a lot of conversations with our Parks and Recreation and Open Space and Events team, with our library, with our housing team. We've, we've looked all around the city to see what kind of things are happening. We've looked at what services are being provided by the community that aren't the city. So, it spurred a lot of conversations and made a lot of connections that have been very helpful, and it's given us an idea of what other cities are looking at. One thing I tried to do a little bit more this year is not just look at our submission, but look at other cities around Arizona specifically. So, you may have seen I included a kind of a really big chart as a, as an attachment to this that showed every other city in Arizona and how well they did. So, it gave me an opportunity to go through and look. I've been able to have conversations with some of those organizations where, so, oh, you're getting points for this. What are you doing for this? And trying to see how they go about their, running their offices and administering some of these programs. I've gotten some really good ideas from that, and I, I can say that I think it was, I think it was Scottsdale was very helpful.
Late night. No, he's got to, I got to get him to basketball practice in the next 15 minutes.
I think that, sorry about that. I believe it was Scottsdale was actually pretty helpful in giving us some of their language that they'd used in their plan books for the transgender inclusive healthcare. We've reached out to the city of Phoenix on some of the programs they provide for anti-bullying things. So, it's allowed us to kind of start some conversations that have been very helpful and have led to important things happening, absolutely.
I really appreciate that commentary. And kind of to build off of that, do you, is, do you see this specific to like the anti-bullying, LGBTQ rights and things like that, or do you see it expanding into other forms of profiling?
I, I always look at ways to expand it. So, the question that I always go to when I see these scores, both when, when we get points and we don't get points, is what does this mean about how we're serving our citizens? And for some of these, there's areas where we don't get a point, or we don't get two points, and I look at it and I say, okay, well, this isn't really a reflection. We're actually doing a pretty good job on this compared to other places. And sometimes I look at points and say, we're getting these points, but maybe we could do a little bit better. So, for example, the, one of the reasons we didn't get points over the last, this last year is on the anti-bullying policy, which is one that we've been looking at for a couple of years, is that it's kind of created some ambitions of a way to do it better than what they're asking us to do. We, they want it for youth, and I had some great conversations last year, especially with our Parks and Recreation team. They have so many programs. They showed, they, they shared a plethora of documents with me, and I went through, well, you know, what are the issues you're actually seeing in your programs? You know, how does it manifest? And what are the mechanisms you need behind a policy? And that conversation ended up being so valuable that we just haven't, we've been trying to do such good work on it that it's taken a little longer than if we had just done a boilerplate, you know? It's hereby enacted, there shall be, you know, every policy or every program should prohibit bullying for the youth. You could do that, and they would give us, give it two points, but that's not doing as good of a job as we can do on it. So, always looking for those kind of things to make things as good as possible in the way that it's experienced by the folks that our city serves.
It brings me a lot of solace that you in particular are the one operating this, this part of, of, or getting the scores and being part of this, because you are taking it to those deeper levels, and that's what I heard during the presentation. It makes, it makes me understand that, you know, just because we didn't get points this year, you're really working outside, outside of the point system to see where this can benefit us better and in more ways than they're offering, which is a real, which is a lot of kudos for the city and for you yourself. So, thank you for everything that you're doing in this program and how you're explaining it is really nice to hear that we're doing that in the city of Flagstaff. I think it's fruitful for our organization as a whole. That's all I got, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Chris, thank you for, you know, I remember when you covered this even just a year ago, you know, the, the learning curve of, oh, you know, what, what can we do to get the points? Maybe we're already doing it, but how do we report it? So, I appreciate your effort. Two questions on the anti-bullying. Are we impacted by what the schools, like the policies they may or may not have, or how successful they are? Or is it just within city-run programs?
So, for the points, it's only the city-run programs. So, we wouldn't get anything for like facts that does after-school care at the school district. Certainly want to look to the things they're doing. They're in our community, and they're, they're, you know, their programs have this kind of thing in them. We're also looking at NIH that has similar type of things on it. But their programs are completely, completely independent, and it's only the city-run programs that, that the points matter for.
Thank you. And then, you know, kind of highlighting the one area that Councilmember Ashland and you spoke of, and I agree about openly identifying, you know, for us to track that, I think is a huge violation of someone's personal space and, and rights. And so, that obviously is a conscious effort that we think that it's better not to try to promote that and jeopardize somebody's privacy. So, I say that because my question then is, is there, besides just our desire to strive to get the most points we can for the reasons they're out there to, for civil rights and, and to improve all of our communities, you know, making sure we're, we're making sure they're okay? But is there any consequence to not getting 100 or not getting 90? I mean, is there any real consequence other than maybe the shame factor that we're not doing anything, or...
There, there's no like material consequence, I would say, from it. This is, I would say, it's a well-known national organization that publishes this information, and it's intended to be used for what we're doing here at the city. They want cities to look at their policies, things on a regular basis. But it's also meant to be kind of a guide to individuals that are worried about discrimination or access to services in different communities to see where they may, you know, want to travel or live or invest or things like that. So, I mean, insofar as that this impacts the decisions that other folks that are not, you know, in our city make possibly, but we don't have any funding tied to this, and there's no consequence if we do poorly in this besides that we do poorly on it, and people may react accordingly.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the presentation and, and all the effort that you put into this year round. So, thank you.
I just want to echo that. You take this very seriously, and I know that we all appreciate it, and we appreciate you taking that extra effort to, to try to improve our standing in this just because we want to be a more inclusive employer and a more inclusive community. So, thank you. All right, we're going to move down to item number 10, Public Works Solid Waste Program
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Scott Overton, Public Works Director. This evening, we're here with kind of a, what I would call lengthy topic or a more involved topic, or bring it to a work session so that you all can take some time to not only ask us questions, but make sure that you listen to what we have to present to you. And with me, of course, we have a lot of support. I would like to point out in particular Sam Beckett, our Section Director overseeing solid waste operations right now. Jen Brown is assisting with our solid waste admin and customer service side. And then, we also have members from the city team in sustainability, which you'll hear from later this evening, Jenny Neiman and Stephen Thompson. Then, of course, there are lots of divisions that are interested in this. So, there may be a question or two that revolves around code compliance or finance or fire. So, a lot of folks are at least engaged in the conversation and understand what we're working through and have been very supportive of our efforts. And if we have some follow-up or questions for those individuals, we will either make sure they're answering those this evening, or we'll follow up as well. So, we have a short presentation, and I think I'd like to start it just by framing the conversation within your staff summary. And over the last month and a half or so, you've seen a number of just emails that have kind of come to you with briefings and what I would consider kind of white paper-type discussions about some of the challenges we see in the solid waste program and section in Public Works. We have spent the good part of the last six months intensely looking at the program and reviewing its operations. I think as a healthy exercise in Public Works, I'm a very big advocate across all of our programs to not only understand our services provided to community, but to understand the impacts to the taxpayer and how can we run efficient operations to make our tax dollars go as far as possible and continue to provide great customer service. We did similar exercises with this same process in the streets side of the house over the last couple of years, and we've really tried to work hard at making certain that our employees not only have the best environments to work in and can take great pride in the services they deliver, but to really try to provide a very cost-effective service to our community and what we consider is an essential service. We're grateful to Councilmember Spence and Councilmember Garcia. They were both able to join us actually last week at Public Works and get a kind of behind-the-scenes tour. I know a number of you have done that in the past. We're very open in our department, and we very, take very great pride in showing you what we're working through. But this is one that has been challenging, and this has been one that has been very interesting. I think many of us, while we didn't have a direct understanding or a direct history or education in the solid waste world, have come to appreciate the complexities of the solid waste industry, some of the same challenges that our peer cities and municipalities across the state are going through, and then, of course, our industry partners in the nation, state, regionally, how we deal with waste streams, how communities not only work with their trash issues, curbside residential and commercial, but how do you deal with recycling streams and streams at the landfill and green waste streams? So, these are all fairly what I would consider simplistic waste streams, but at the same time, they can also be complex. And so, we're trying to sort out, how do we provide good service to the community, find that balance with financial resources, and be good stewards of what we see as a waste stream. There's some opportunity. There's also some pretty significant challenges. We have two primary waste streams. The first is trash, rubbish refuse. It goes in bins, carts on the residential side, typically most always hauled to our residential, commercial landfill for trash. That's the Cinder Lake landfill on 89 North. We also have a hazardous product center at that site that deals with household, household hazardous wastes. So, paint products, aerosols, oils, things that you might drop off as cleaners, we can kind of repurpose those for the community if appropriate, and even blend and mix old-used paint for reuse in the community. So, that's been a good diversion in a very ecological way to deal with hazardous household wastes. And then, one of our larger waste streams, of course, that you're very familiar with if you've been on council for a while, is our recycle stream. We assumed the Norton operation on Butler Avenue about two years ago now, and in short order, we took the waste stream, turned it into a transfer station process, and we've been taking that product to the city of Phoenix. There's a recycler, private contractor, Friedman Recycling. They were awarded our logistics contractor and processing contract. So, they take all of our recyclables, put them in a truck, ship them to Phoenix where they're properly processed. We do not process in the community post Norton. So, that's been another very new and kind of exciting market, but I will also say that it is a strained and challenged market nationwide. Recyclables have really looked a lot different since 2019 when China as a country changed the way they dealt with recyclable products and the way America dealt with recyclable products. So, we continue to work through that, but it has been a very new and large part of our operation. We are enterprise-funded. Just as a reminder, you're going to go through budget training later this week, but this fund does not make a profit like a business, but we run it like a business. So, we try to provide great essential service to the community without making a profit. We break even. We try to cover our costs. And really, historically, what we have been seeing in the last couple of years, to no great surprise, is the cost of recycling has been substantial. The inflationary impacts, things like fuel and maintenance and tires have chased this program just like they have everyone. So, even if we see an increase in revenues, we're still continuing to see, you know, kind of the, the eroding of that fund as we try to keep that balance. So, we have a strong keen eye on our equipment maintenance and the way we treat equipment and how we try to maintain things to last as long as possible, which has operationally been something we've been doing for quite some time. Clear routing expectations so that not only our customers have a clear sense of when their cart might be picked up, but are we doing it efficiently? Are we doing it in a manner that makes sense? And then, from our operator's perspective, we want to make sure their routes are as specific as possible, as purposeful as possible, so that we know we're going down a road every day, picking up carts in the most efficient route possible. And then, of course, that equates to save labor, save overtime, better truck usage, better employee time usage, more happy employees versus kind of this chaotic routing system. So, we've been working through all of those logistics issues, but now we have a series of program changes, and I will tell you, I will own these as your director and as the operations oversight of this division. We knew we had to make some pretty swift actions to keep this fund solvent. We will check in with finance, and I know they're online tonight. This has been a stressed enterprise fund for some time. This has been a stressed enterprise fund for some time. The easy button for us generally in government might be to consider a rate increase or a rate study. We know and we're very respectful of the council and the deliberate dialogue you went through as a community in the last year going through rate studies and water. We know that it's a long, difficult road to go through rate studies. This fund had completed its last rate study in 2018, so fairly recently, six years ago. The last increase in rates was just over two years ago. So, we've been holding our rates for a while now, but I feel like it's most appropriate if we can implement as many efficiencies as possible and demonstrate good business practices and really try to provide same level of service, if not more predictable service with some changes, some give and take to try to offset a future rate increase. Doesn't rule it out. I think we will still see in some of our longer-term projections, we have some cell development at the landfill that is expensive and we may have a need for a rate increase or some other funding mechanism that helps us build some larger capital. But operationally, I will tell you, I feel confident with these adjustments. I think we have seen good success thus far and we're here to not only get some information to you, but from you. And we are willing to take some of those questions and answers and discuss these changes as we go. But operationally, we were at a point where it was pretty essential to start doing some things to make a positive impact on where we were headed financially as a fund. So, with that, I will go over a few of the key changes. I can stop at any time if you prefer. We will, of course, take questions at the end, but happy to take anything before we get into the presentation at your desire.
Just real quick, who's in charge of public waste right now?
Public wa- solid waste.
Solid waste, sorry.
So, it's in Public Works and it is one section of the four sections. Currently, Sam Beckett oversees the operations and Jen Brown oversees customer service and administration of like the admin assistants and all the forward-facing side of the house. We do have a vacancy in Public Works as a section director, so both of them have split that responsibility and then I've been assisting with policy level and kind of more of this type of stuff. So, we're splitting it among the three of us.
Okay. That was the question I was kind of dancing around. There is a vacancy right now?
We do have one vacancy. Correct. Good question. Sorry, I didn't recall that necessarily as a specific point, but that is why Sam and Jen are assisting in particular. So, of course, the fiscal health of the fund is first and foremost and probably one of our most important drivers. We spent months talking to employees and managers and supervisors to try to balance and create some staff alignment. We were seeing and are seeing some pretty significant overtime impacts amongst this work group. We'd like to find them some balance and we'd like to not only provide good service, but maybe try to find a way to reduce doubling up routes and try to find some time off for these folks that is meaningful. We'll talk about how we got to that conclusion. Improved customer service can look different to different people. I think for us, it is your cart collection as a resident should be seamless. If you do have commercial service with our provider as a city, you should know when your dumpster is going to be picked up and we want you to count on that. So, we need to improve upon that. We know we've missed some carts, we've missed some bins, we saw some slippage within our routes and kind of the way things were being done time-wise. So, we think by making some of these changes, we actually provide a much better predictable service to residents, which we're looking forward to and I think they would as well. Efficient operations and routing, this goes simply to basic principles of how you route a truck and how you make sure you're picking up effectively. This also hits a number of the benchmarks we're trying to meet with our carbon neutrality plan and trying to reduce fuel consumption, improve on the way we utilize heavy equipment, which is not a likely candidate, for example, an electric vehicle. So, that is a really nice parlay to some of the goals we're trying to accomplish at that program level. Equipment service demands, this equipment is complicated. It has a lot of moving parts. We saw some slipping in our preventative maintenance program, the general upkeep and maintenance of the trucks. We are running them into the ground. They are very expensive at about $400,000 apiece for a typical garbage truck nowadays. We have to make those last as long as possible. So, getting them into the shop, making sure they have the best greasing procedures and the best procedures to make sure they work well for the longest amount of time, we needed some downtime on the equipment itself. Understanding the waste stream, the more we learn about where products go has helped us divert from the landfill and make certain that we're taking product to the best location possible. And then, community communications. We have done a very, very aggressive campaign to try to get the word out differently and to try to think about how we talk to customers. In six short months, we have now worked into platforms and Jen has done a great job with staff to try to figure out, how do we contact customers by route? How do we let them know that there may be a delay in their service? So, we have some tools that have been working well so far and we'd like to make sure that you're not only aware of those, but remind community that we are here to communicate with them and we want to make sure they're very well understood.
Sorry, it took me a minute to pull up the page I was looking for. Just before you go on, I just want to get clarification on a few things. I'm looking at the 2024-25 budget.
Okay.
And I don't think I've recognized the solid waste fund name before. Maybe it's called something else, if you could expand on that. And then, and I, we've emailed back and forth, but the solid waste department is the enterprise fund, not facilities, not streets.
Correct.
And so, I'm looking at the actual expenditures for the prior year and then the expenditures for '23-'24 were $2.08 million and change and we budgeted $4 million. So, it looks like we were about $80,000 ahead of what we budgeted versus what our actual expenditures were. So, can you just give me a better outlook on how we're at this point now where we're running in a deficit?
So, I'm not looking at the document you're looking at, so I'm hesitant to kind of understand. We do have, generally, everything is in one fund of solid waste and it's fund number 211 and I think you're looking probably at the public-facing side of the budget book with the pie slices. So, I want to make sure we have the correct and most accurate information and remember...
I'm looking at the page, this page 265 that has like a budget.
Yep.
Last year's expenditures.
The columns. So, I might ask, if Rick Tatter is on with us, we might have to come back to your question and if he can pull up that budget book. I don't know if, he was on earlier and we may have to pull up that page and look at it on the screen to make sure we're all reading the same information. And I think what's difficult is the budget book lays out our resources and allocations of what we anticipate and then we have what's in real time. So, in that book, it would have been about a year's dated material. So, now we're working into this budget year and if we can get some finance help, we may have to follow up on some of those detailed questions.
He's...
Oh, perfect.
Questions in the chat, Mike, answer them.
Yeah, and we can't see the chat, so...
He asked what page number.
Oh. Okay. So, I'll give him some time if you don't mind and we'll come back to your finance questions and that'll give them a little bit of time to read that page and we'll make sure we answer that question, but they are more appropriate for finance questions.
And so, while he's researching that and I am looking at the 2024-2025 budget book that's publicized, it only shows that we, the source of funding is a solid waste fund, which at least in the budget was more than expenditures. So, that would tell me that as of this budget time, when we did this last year, it was a true enterprise fund and did not need to take from general funds, correct?
Correct. We do not take general fund.
And so, now, if I understand what you were saying earlier, this last year, not projected in the budget, we're facing higher maintenance and fuel costs, employee, the employee cost should have been anticipated because we do that soon, like in the next week or so, right?
It does not mean we take general fund dollars. We have fund balance and we have contingencies and Rick will be able to explain this via some charts and maybe even later this week, you'll see some more information as we move forward. We're looking at the trend. We're looking at where the fund's health is longer term. So, we are not in a mode of, we have to take from general fund and support this fund. We know we have resources to continue, but the projection is where we are seeing a trend that doesn't look healthy. And again, I want Rick to help us answer that question because I want it to be a very good answer for you.
Yeah, that's, that's starting to explain it to me. So, we're just seeing a trend that you're trying to get ahead of.
Correct.
So, we're not there yet, but we don't want to get to a place where we are having to pull from general funds because now these expenses continue to trend in this direction.
It's a very simplistic way to say it, but then remember, within the fund, we have the landfill, we have collections, we have recycling. So, there's a number of factors that are influencing the health of the overall fund. And Rick, do you want to chime in at this point or I'm stalling a little bit for you, I guess, to have a correct answer or do you want to jump in now?
I could try and, try and jump in, just a second here. Trying to get my camera working. Here we are. It was hard for me to follow what you were trying to get to, Councilmember Matthews, Rick Taylor, Management Service Director. The, as I was trying to get to the pages, what you're looking at is really just one section in solid waste. So, each section kind of has a page in the book of what their approved budget was and also the prior expectations. So, it's really just a snapshot for one year. It really doesn't give the ongoing picture of the solid waste fund. To look at really how the funds work and you look at the five-year plans in the book, those are the ones that kind of show how we balance our revenues, resources, grants potentially, debt financing and all that is up in the five-year plan details. So, I guess if you want to restate what you're asking about on this page, I could try and get you an answer there.
Oh, what I was asking for this particular point was, I saw on the budget, in the budget book that's published, that the solid waste department, that's the enterprise fund out of the whole Public Works, correct? Because streets is not part of that, maintenance is not part of that. And it's been, the budget reflected that our expenditures were not exceeding our, what we'd budgeted to assume we would in collections. So, I was just curious and Scott answered most of it for me where it was more of a projection of what the trends were doing, not what we have reality today. Because it was conflicting when I saw the budget versus what we're discussing now, but Scott did clarify that, that it was a projection of the trends that we're seeing in the collections and how we fund the general, the solid waste fund.
Yeah, and I guess one thing, if you're looking at page 265.
That's where it starts.
There's also the, the adopted budget has a capital item of $1.4 million. We're showing we're not spending that, what we're carrying over to the next fiscal year. So, there's also that, that thing you got to look at as far as, we may not spend it in one year, but we may carry things forward as far as capital and projects. So, that may be part of where you're seeing the trends also.
Thank you. I'll leave it there for right now. Thank you.
Okay. And we'd be glad to walk through the five-year plan with you if you want to reach out to us.
Thank...
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. And I do think that actually might answer the question more holistically. Taking a look at that five-year plan that we review, I think gives you the capital picture, gives you our current, where we're headed and then it shows you within five years, kind of where that fund balance lands and why it's some trouble ahead. So, I think that actually gives you a better picture than versus one program, as Rick suggested, across the fund. And I apologize, I'm just not looking at that. Hard to pretend what I see in my mind and know it's what you're looking at. Absolutely. So, there's really five main topics we're going to try to cover this evening and I might suggest we get through them and then we come back to them or we can take them as we go. Holiday scheduling is a big one and I'll have a slide on each of these. Commercial services, some modifications with the way we deal with our commercial customers, our bulk trash program, the green waste program at the landfill and then the communications piece, again, I'd like to hit on. Holiday scheduling, we recognize and we heard very clearly from a lot of our employees, they'd like to have some time off. Historically, they would take Christmas Day and Thanksgiving Day and then work all the other holidays. We have found a way to allow our employees, like all other staff employees, to recognize all 13 city holidays. But what that means is we suspend the service on the actual holiday. So, we saw, for example, at Martin Luther King, no collection on Martin Luther King Day. We then notify and work with customers to flex the schedule and I use the word flex purposely. It is not necessarily always next day. And in a Monday holiday, it works very easily to do most of the route pickups next day, but sometimes when it's a holiday towards the end of the week, say Thanksgiving, we may have to actually move service up forward one day to try to meet two days of coverage. So, this is kind of a unique flex across the week. We will still get to each residence, we will still pick up their trash and recycle cart, but we are grateful that they have been very kind to us and recognize that, hey, it makes sense. The postman takes the holiday off and the bank is closed. Our employees deserve that time off and so, we are still committed to picking it up, but this one generally is a fairly easy operation for us. It also means we can keep the landfill closed on that day. And then, we see savings in not opening the landfill and staffing the landfill and then we see overtime savings. So, our employees get the holiday off, they receive their holiday pay, but we're not doubling it up with overtime impacts for a lot of these employees. So, for us, we think this is smart and we also think this gives us that time. We were talking about for some equipment maintenance needs, this allows us that downtime from time to time so we can flex to other groups. And then, of course, we want to point out and recognize holidays, special events that are supported may need some special treatment. And a great example is New Year's Eve. We cannot take New Year's Eve Day off in the downtown corridor. We have way too much product from New Year's Eve, so we know we are going to have to have a special crew come in to address New Year's Eve, Fourth of July, some of the big ones in the downtown core. So, we just wanted to make sure we pointed out. We plan on continuing to support those. Commercial collections, this one is a very unique business process for us. We are required by state law to pick up residential carts, so that is not an option for us. We provide that as an essential service. But commercial is different. Commercial is considered an open market. We have competitors in the community that would take dumpsters from businesses or from a special order of a residence and that continues today. So, we work in the competitive market. We would like to continue to provide service to our existing employees, but we are requesting a suspension of taking on new employee, new services and new commercial accounts. We are falling farther behind on the bins as our community grows. We are not growing our truck fleet, we're not growing our FTE fleet to a degree that can keep up on the commercial side. We also just need to find a way to balance out the required services first and some of these commercial accounts have high demands, they're very high-producing volume customers. Some of them have migrated to other providers in the community and we have not noticed a decrease in our intake at the landfill, which tells me they're still bringing us the product. We're making income and revenue on the actual trash, but we may not be collecting it. It's not a big, big moneymaker for us. We do cover our costs in the collection side of most of our commercial services. We also have those big roll-off commercial bins that maybe come to your home during a roof replacement or a construction project. Open market as well with that. We do not do very well financially on that into the business. So, same, we will keep our existing customers, but we'd like to suspend new customer accounts and allow just the natural private market to pick those up. Sunday collections will continue at our downtown bin locations. It's the only location citywide that we pick up seven days a week, so we will continue with that service. And then, we wanted to reassure you all and some of our local community partners, the university, the school district, Coquenino County, national parks, the places that we know... the places that we know we have tremendous value and we have good partnerships with as existing customers, we will continue to service them. I think those are kind of our intergovernmental partners that we know would be strained if we told FUSD and they built a new school, please go find a new provider. We don't have the energy to say, please go find a new provider. We will continue to provide service to all of our government partners, I think is the easiest way to call it out. And then special events, sometimes we have a neighborhood cleanup or you have a specific event that needs dumpster service. We will continue to advocate for those as city-sponsored events as we have in the past. I think as of late, we've been talking a lot about forest health and community impacts of community cleanups. And we've done those in the past with cooperation of the fire department. We would continue to support those as those are always needed in the spring months in particular. Bulk trash service, this one's probably the most discussed in the community at this point. I'll be honest, we've had a few dozen calls. Most, all of them, we've been taking personally, either Sam or Jen or myself. And they've been good conversations. They start off a little bit grouchy and a little bit angry, but they generally kind of listen and they understand and we hear what their concerns are and it kind of makes sense at the end of the conversation. We would like and are transitioning to quarterly collections at all residential sites. That's part of the service that is provided by bulky. We used to drive every single street, every single month, looking for trash. And many, many valley cities have now gone to appointment-only service or to very specific site service. We think this is a good balance to reduce frequency to quarterly pickup. We know that is a very big change, but now we are no longer going to necessarily drive every single street, every single month. We're going to target the messaging, we're going to make sure our residents understand the schedule. It has been published, it's been released. We're hopeful that people really pay attention to those. They're pretty good about putting the schedule on their magnet refrigerator and understanding when their bulky time is. We'd like to continue to provide great service here and understand that while the frequency is down, we think with good customer behavior, good targeted piled programs, they'll put it out at the right time, we'll collect it at the right time and get it off the streets. All existing routes will continue to be serviced, again, just different frequency. The one minor change that's a little hard to understand and it's easier to verbalize is the holiday weeks. So during the holiday weeks, we do not pick up bulky. So we did not pick up bulky during MLK week. And it's really a driver issue. So we take all the drivers and all the operators out of the bulky program and put them in trucks. So we can get all those holiday collections picked up on time in that flex schedule. So we're using the resource of the drivers in the flex week and we're using the bulky drivers for that purpose. We still get to every residence in every quarter, but moving the resource of the operator assists us in route coverage in those holiday weeks. So that, again, avoids us next, having to work the next weekend to get it all caught up. Really important to note, and this has been a really good talking point, is that our landfill will always accept residential bulk waste year-round at no additional cost. It is part of your inclusive bill. So if you can't get it all on the curb or you just don't want to wait the next month for your bulky pickup, you're always welcome to come on out to the landfill, the most beautiful landscaped asset of the city of Flagstaff, and we'll take it. They're open generally six days a week. Bring that water bill out and that is an option that people do take advantage of. A number of residents already use it exclusively. But we think we may see an uptick in people bringing trash out themselves and that's okay. We welcome that and we'll be ready for it at the landfill. Strong coordination with our code enforcement professionals, sustainability, our teams, our solid waste supervisors, the education coordination to residents is big. It has been an abuse program in the past. Piles get too big, they put a stack of tires out, they put appliances out, things that aren't appropriate for bulky piles. I've never had the approach that we should go out and ticket them or be real heavy-handed. We think it's community debris, we think it belongs in the landfill, we want to get it to there safely. But we're going to need some community cooperation. We think we've tried to find some carrots to really entice people to work harder at putting out appropriate piles. We still have some work to do on this. HOAs have been very, very helpful with this effort. But general residents sometimes do abuse the bulky program. And, you know, we've traditionally just kind of done it, picked it up, kept it off the street. But it's getting harder and harder to take on big, big, big piles. And so we're trying to find that balance. Reggie has been great, code enforcement have been very, very good at trying to be very courteous, very helpful. But we think we continue to educate the community and we know that's an ongoing game with the community to try to work through the appropriate use of bulk. Downtown services as appropriate. Once in a while, we have to run bulky trucks through downtown. We have overflow conditions. Again, back to the holiday weeks, we will continue to keep an eye on that, make sure that we're not seeing those conditions. And then special pickup is always available. So sometimes you have a, an unusual need. You have a large move-in or move-out and there's just a larger pile of debris that you can't catch the schedule. You are welcome to call our department, we can set up that as an appointment scheduled pickup. There is an additional cost to that from time to time, depending on what we're picking up and the timing. But it is a service we can provide. We don't like to advertise it, we don't want a bunch of appointments. But we know that sometimes people have just an excess of things. Moving and move-out are probably the two biggest that we see. Two more quick slides, then we're going to get to all of your questions. And then, again, I think we'll probably come back to this to clarify anything you have. Green waste program, for years, we have been trying to figure out forest health, what we do to keep our community safe. We also take green waste at the landfill. We will continue to take green waste at the landfill. But we are trying to find ways to divert the green waste. And by that, I mean working with maybe restoration soils and other community partners. How can we find a way to reutilize this product? Right now, if you bring a load of pine needles or cones, those go in the trash. This stuff is limbs, chopped-down trees, things that have some value for the moisture content and is a true green waste. Currently, we're piling them up at the landfill in a very large pile of green waste and then we chip it every couple of years with contracted service. It's fairly expensive. The smaller we can make that pile and divert it, the better off we are for an expense. So we're really trying to figure out, how can we avoid the chipping expense long-term? And then, once it's chipped, it becomes valuable to us to a degree. We can blend it and use it for daily cover over our trash. So that is helpful to a point. We also see there's a market where small landscape contractors and some small logging operations are starting to chip their product. We think we can take more of that for a cheaper rate than full price. What we don't want to see is a stump or a really large tree. We're trying to find a way to coordinate with our providers and really use this product as best as possible. But the first that can come up with a solution on this program will, will be the best on the planet. We're trying, but this one's really, really challenging. But we need to do some business differently so we don't get a giant pile of green waste. I want Sustainability to speak to their points. Stephen's going to help us out with this. I don't want to derail our thought and where we're at with the questions. I will finish with community outreach and then we will be ready and available for your questions. But if it's okay with you, Mayor, I'm going to jump to Stephen, finish Sustainability and then we'll wrap up with communications and your questions. Good? All right. Stephen, good luck.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephen Thompson and I serve as a manager within the Sustainability Division. I'm here to talk about the first set of bullet points on this slide, highlighting some of the continued work that the Sustainability Office and the programs I oversee, working directly with solid waste on a regular basis. Top on the list is behavior change campaigns. And we work with solid waste and public affairs on a monthly basis to help craft messaging that really encourages waste prevention, putting waste in the right place and demystifying waste in our community to help achieve the goals of preventing the wrong things ending up in the wrong place. And then how some of those take shape, social media, radio ads, and a lot of events and workshops. So in our diversion events and services, we partner with solid waste and other divisions to host things like fix-it clinics, drop-off days, tree cycling, and our residential food scrap drop-off program. And then moving into waste prevention and education, not only does that take shape in social media, but we are asked on a regular basis to present information at schools, organizations, neighborhood associations to share information about how to prevent waste and how to put things in the correct place. Primarily, we get asked all the time about, how do you recycle this? And then improving the existing tools. On the screen there, there's a screenshot of the Recycle by City website where community members can sign up to receive notifications about their regular services. So if I want to know and get email reminders every, every week before my recycling or residential trash services are going to be picked up, I can get that notification. It also sends out calendar reminders. And so it's a really good tool and resource that we work with solid waste to make sure it's up to date and provides the most accurate information. Working with Jen to, Jen Brown to continue that messaging and making sure all the information going out is accurate and consistent. And then we're always looking for growing partnerships and working with organizations in the community to help prevent waste or get it to the right place. An initiative that you may have heard of before is Donate Don't Ditch, working with NAU to help with those move-in, move-out periods. From there, I will turn it over back, back to Scott to talk about the operational sustainability initiatives.
Thank you, Stephen. I will say they're a critical piece to our efforts as a community and we do lean on them for a lot of our education and outreach programs and campaigns. So thank you to them and their support. Operationally, I spoke to all these previously with the exception of one, but route optimization helps us with our fuel consumption and our routing of trucks. Encouraging reuse and upcycling, so we've really gotten into the bulky piles and we've found some good stuff. It's like, man, this Christmas tree's still in great shape, the artificial ones that they're throwing out. So we actually have one that houses itself in Public Works. But our point is, if we can keep it out of the bulk stream and we can keep it out of the waste stream, let's try to reuse it as a community. So landfill diversion for us is a key sustainability goal. Last one, we're almost there. Community outreach, a lot of tools we are utilizing. And this screen is a little bit busy and I apologize for the bulletin you're seeing on the right. Pretty hard to see in this screen. Public Affairs, Sustainability, our staff, they meet often to discuss the challenges of solid waste and how they're being communicated. We have a new communication tool, Constant Contact. That is that subscription email program where you get notice about program changes or upcoming events. That has been a great tool for us since October. And so it's more personable, it's more directed. That's the one where we can pull out the customer base based on route. We're hopeful that we're also going to utilize that in our snow operations programs in the future so that we can even do better at communicating. So that's been really a good one. And then, of course, how do we register people? How do we get them in that system, working with customer service, making sure that everyone understands it? We have QR codes out now, they're on the side of trucks. We're seeing a really good response rate to people showing up to that. And Jen always shares some good statistics on people that are pretty excited about it. If we make a spelling error, they also let us know. Press releases, social media, the magnet stickers, all the usual stuff is still in place. We also did with a lot of these program changes, direct mailings. So the HOAs, larger business groups, trying to get out to them, meeting one-on-one with restaurants or with larger multifamily complexes. So we understand that they have resources in the community. If we can't provide a service, we try to connect them with others that can. So just wanted to know that this has been a direct and meaningful effort. With that, we posed a few questions if you didn't have any. We're not necessarily specifically asking you for feedback on these, but there are three to think about. Ideas, considerations, something innovative that we should start to think about that might actually strengthen our program, if you've been thinking about it. What outcomes or benchmarks are important for you all to understand? We have our own internal ones. What might be best for you to communicate with your constituents? Success of these changes, are they good, they bad, did they work? And are there particular neighborhoods or groups that you feel need additional information or communication? I feel like we've done a good job reaching across all the community, but we always miss some. We want to make sure if you've heard of one or two, we take note of those. Our group will be taking notes and, of course, we will field all of your questions, comments and answers. And before I let you go, I did want to point out, we have some landfill staff with us, our landfill manager Richie Hearn. And Juan Parra is with us as well, our landfill supervisor. And, oh, Justin is in the back. He has been our acting solid waste manager as well. So they're listening intently and we want to make sure they see what we get to see.
Great. Vice Mayor and then Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you and thank you for the presentation. A couple of comments and then I'll go into my question. I did want to, you know, thank you for looking at the efficiencies and not going right to doing a rate study. I think our community and, and the organization is thankful for having a little break on that. I know that the fiscally being responsible is important and it looks like you're trying to be proactive and plan ahead. I appreciate the community communications, supporting the special events in the downtown core. You and I have talked a lot about that. And the Sunday pickups in downtown has proved to be essential and I appreciate that you listened to us when we brought that up months ago. My question really goes around the bulky trash pickup and what I believe is probably on all of our minds and why fire is here tonight. You know, I, I look at my bags of pine needles that I still have and planning my trip to the dump soon. But I, I don't want the new bulky trash pickup schedule to impact the need for us to keep our yards clean and fire-wise. And I'm worried that now that we're to a quarterly system, we are not really advocating for the community to keep up on getting the pine needles up and being on top of that part of being fire-wise. So my, I'm wondering, have we talked about that? Can we schedule a separate pine needle pickup, pickup in late fall and really tout it as, hey, we really want you to clean your yards up, now's the time because we are scheduling an extra pickup for the pine needles? Do you have any comments and fire, if you have any comments?
Yeah, I mean, I will certainly defer to my friends in fire if they'd like to provide some extra comment. But I think, operationally, let me provide you what I see as an observation. You are spot-on. We encourage our community to keep their yards clean and deal with green waste and most of them do a pretty good job. We see a couple crushed seasons. So we see what I would consider our most busy season in the fall months and it's when pine needles are dropping. Doesn't always get cleaned up at that exact same time, but we see an increase and we see an uptick in tonnages, we see more activity at the landfill. I know I have stressed to our team that while we have moved to the quarterly concept, we were not seeing bulk pine needles in January or March or off times of the year. But I do think you bring up a very great and fair point. In August, September, October, when we start to see the impacts of the community doing some pretty good cleanup work, we're going to have to react. And I think we're going to be nimble and I think we're going to have to make certain that we recognize, we'd like to stick to the quarterly schedule, but is it a targeted, you know, specific cleanup for an area? Or do we need to think about running two extra trucks, one additional week to try to go citywide with maybe kind of like we do for a Christmas tree cycling program? Something very similar. And I don't have all the logistics worked out, but I think we've thought about that and we think we can support it. But it would be kind of an additional program above and beyond that quarterly routine service. But I think you're correct. People get out there in the fall and they put out their thirty bags and how do we pick that up as a community appropriately and quickly?
So you kind of hit it right on the nail of what I was thinking. An extra service that is like the Christmas tree pickup and really targeting, and you have all the great communication going. We can let the residents know, you know, we are adding this additional service, encouraging you. Please make sure your yards are, are cleaned up.
I, I think the one difficulty we have, and I, I think that's actually a good way, you just repeated it back, is we're dealing with Mother Nature and I don't always predict that pine needle drop accurately. So I know at my own private residence, I think I got it all and then a big old windstorm comes in a month later and I got to do it all again. So I think that's the strategy, is how do we continue to kind of think like that but yet meet a windstorm or when people seem to be getting out and about? We've seen a fairly substantial continued bulky put out this winter because we haven't had snow. Traditionally, the snow drops and then bulky stops. So it's kind of been an unusually dry winter that's allowed people to get out and clean up even as of late. So I know we're open to it, I know it's a challenge, but I think we can get there. So I know we're open to it, I know it's a challenge, but I think we can get there.
Thank you. I guess I would just really ask that this is top of mind and a priority as we move forward, because I, I know it's a challenge, and I can see where you're coming from on the timing, but it, in my opinion, it just has to happen.
Agreed. And we have had some really nice programs with sustainability and the Fire Department, the community cleanups, I know they had a nice one in University Heights last year where we dropped the bins in their cul-de-sacs. You know, I think there may be a couple more of those this year. And I don't know, Paul, if you have anything additional to add, you're right behind me, I felt you.
Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, nice to see everybody. Paul Triggy, Wildland Fire Battalion Chief within the Fire Department, and Director Overton's already, he's hit on everything that, that we're looking to do logistically and operationally. The only finer point that I'll offer is that we're working with sustainability to put dates to that plan. And one of them that is in the near future, in the spring, would be the Wildland Fire Preparedness State, which is a national effort, which I believe is May 5th. So we'll, we'll continue to work with Jenny and her staff, and we'll execute that plan, and, and we'll offer that to the public, communicate that really well. And our goal is going to be to offer that, something close to that once a quarter, but we'll continue to work with Public Works and Sustainability on that.
Thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Aslan and then Councilmember Spence.
Hi, Scott. My question was pretty specific earlier, but I'll have a couple other things to say too. You were talking about alleviating overtime, which I'm fully on board with, I support that, I hope everyone else on Council does too and can articulate that. You mentioned that one of the ways you flex on that is by pushing forward service by day. How does that work? If, if I put my trash out on Tuesday and find out the truck came on Monday, I don't understand how that works.
So, we've never done it. Where I think, operationally, we didn't see it until late, but a Monday is a really easy holiday, we generally can go next day. A Thursday Thanksgiving holiday is more difficult to go everybody on Friday, so it's on us to try to figure out before the end-of-the-week holidays, particularly Thanksgiving, how we communicate to you as a resident, you got to put it out a day early. So we're going to see a real strong impact of flex scheduling, and you're going to see a big communication push about getting residents to watch that schedule. I don't know if it's going to be wildly successful at first, I think we're going to have to trial and error a little bit, and then we'll see people that maybe didn't get the message or weren't necessarily proactive to put it out the day before, and we have to figure out how we pick that cart up. We get a lot of calls, maybe a missed cart, holidays are very confusing. My hope is, is people start to get in this habit of constant contact, they really do pay attention to it. We have a number of holidays we can work through before we have to deal with this, but by me saying next day, that's not always practical from the scheduling standpoint. And then we have more frustration from the customer service side, because I told you next day, and then if I don't get there till Saturday on a Thursday holiday, people seem to be pretty upset. So by me saying flex, it might be Saturday, I don't think we're going to see a lot of forward flex, but we know if you leave your cart on the curb, we'll get it. But it's just hard to tell you definitively next day. And so I'm trying to buy the operations team a little bit of time, and I think if I missed it or I didn't explain it well enough, let me know. Sam might be able to explain it better from the scheduling standpoint.
It's okay, it's a minor point.
Okay.
Just a, a comment or just thinking out loud here, you know, the, in terms of the bulk pickup, boy, our, our community really likes its bulk pickup. In fact, I would go so far as to, to say they very much feel entitled to it. And I would just point out that that's not true. This is a service that's provided to everyone in the city with no extra cost, and they've just become sort of, they take it for granted, but it's, it's not something that, that's baked into the cake or that's required of us. That said, we are used to it. I do think that it needs to continue. You know, I was just having this memory, I got conjured up this memory of, of my dad throwing me in his white truck and filling it with stuff, and we would drive, this was in Prescott somewhere, Lord knows where he was going, but not to the dump, but he, he would, he would back up to a steep hill or something and just, I would help him shovel things out, you know? This is the world that I was presented with, I just never questioned it. I don't think a lot of people do that anymore, but it's just an example of what we don't want to start happening as people adapt and come up with their own solutions to what they perceive as a deficit of the system. You don't really need to comment on that, it's just a weird memory I totally forgot about as a kid, which is interesting. I think it was out by Senator Highway somewhere. Okay, anyway. So, so we, we need to make sure, and from a sustainability perspective, that we're not, we're not creating unintended behaviors. So I'll just leave it at that for now, and these are great questions, going to spend some time thinking about them. I have spent some time thinking about them, and can think of a couple people to talk to as well. I'll get back to you.
Thank you. We do not want illegal dumping. We never have, we don't want, and if we see an uptick, we'll have to figure it out. We'll have to sort out the education piece to that. We have good contacts in the National Forest, and that's where we see it would occur most often. You're right, I don't think it's prevalent, but we are certainly aware, and we don't want that to be the issue. I think having landfill access is key to helping resolve some of that, but we will keep an eye on that. Good comment.
And to reiterate, you can go to the landfill with your water bill for free during its regular hours, so.
You are.
If you have a trailer, but, but if you're going to dump in the forest, you might as well go to the landfill.
We would hope they would, yes. Six days a week, we'd love to have them.
This is 45 years ago.
Councilmember Spence and then Councilmember House.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With regard to the landfill operations, are you allowed to increase the tipping fees for the commercial haulers as an additional revenue stream?
So right now, we do have a rate structure that is adopted by Council. The last rate study, again, completed in 2018, and that rate structure is set by Council. So we have some ability to look at the waste stream, so for example, the chips and maybe some cover material, if we can find usable material but trash, is set by you all. We have not adjusted those rates, and again, that's some of this rationale on why we have not wanted to come back. My suspicion is the rate study will show us to increase fees. So we've, we've purposely said let us implement these changes first, but we would not raise the rates arbitrarily or outside of Council action, that is your prerogative.
Thank you. So it, it seems to me like low-hanging fruit. We're not talking about increasing the rates for residential customers without a rate study, but why would we need, we as a council, why would we need an extensive rate study to do a 50% increase on tipping fees for commercial haulers? If they want to haul their trash to another land, another commercial landfill, that's their option. If they want to take their business to another community, that's their option. It seems to me like if the commercial haulers are making a profit off of commercial customers, they would have to absorb that cost increase or take their marbles and go home.
Yeah, thank you for the comments. I might ask Rick, I'll prepare you for the question, but rate studies generally look holistically at the entire fund. It will come down to Council prerogative of what you assign those rates, and the rate study really only demonstrates expenses, cost of operation compared to revenues. And then, as many saw in the water rate study, you get to kind of negotiate where those rates are distributed. Rick, did I explain that fairly enough in a rate study and why we don't necessarily pull one customer out, but it might be a decision of Council following a rate study?
Yeah, there, there's definitely a process we have to go through, and there's a report that we have to put together. It doesn't have to be a full-on rate study that we'll have to do. We could identify some areas that we want to do, just a quick internal update to rates and justify through a report and bring that back. It's an option to do, but it's not really giving you the full picture of the operations and the needs that we have. So there's some targeted rate increases we can do, but it does take a, about a six-month process to put those in.
Hopefully that's helpful. Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you, Rick.
Councilmember House and Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation to you and the team. I'm going to go back to bulky trash, and I'm going to ask a question, but then I want to explain why I'm asking the question. So during the, the rollout of the change, I, I also had a few dozen conversations as well, and it was probably more questions than I've ever had from, from community members. The biggest one was asking why Council cut bulk pickup, and so it, it led to some really interesting and a shifted dynamic of those sorts of questions. I, I go back to what Councilmember Aslan said about just it being something that the community is so used to and seeing this change as something very major. So can you share again, like how this change was communicated and maybe dive a bit more or more into or just reiterate the why? And as I'm asking that question, it's not because I, I think that it was not communicated or that you really need to, but one thing that's helpful for me, especially if these conversations continue, is to be able to express that from the perspective of, of the team that's, that's working through this more directly.
Certainly. I might defer to the manager's office here in a moment, we'll see if they want to assist in the question-answer, and I will say, operationally, when we started to see impacts of this fund changing, and we saw the waste stream revenues changing, that's when it triggered for us. We've got to start looking at the business differently, and we have to start right-sizing our operation. And again, as I said in my opening remarks, this was really in the purview of the operations, and I think the fair answer is, we maybe have been bringing you information at budget retreats, and we've been talking through recycling and some of the impacts of these programs, but operationally, we knew these changes had to occur to make some significant headway on the financial impacts that we're seeing in this fund. While not popular with some, I think they do make a lot of sense operationally. I think we certainly gave it every effort, and I would encourage you not to defer any question, I think they're all appropriate and well-articulated. We try to provide you that information, and if I can point back to tonight's staff summary and even some of that email correspondence that we've provided, I try to really lay out in bullet point form for you all, really the rationale and the whys, because I think it is important you have those talking points, so that you can clearly and articulately speak to the public about the revenue impacts and the customer service expectations we were seeing and balancing our work programs to write even better efficiencies. So it's hard to put you in that position to take all of these solutions and formulate kind of a two-second or two-minute talking story of the why, and I think that's our responsibility to help you fill those voids. So I'm hopeful that the totality of your emails, the presentation, your staff summaries give you more comfort. I don't know if we'll get it all done tonight at the podium, but I think that's where I would encourage you to reach back out and let's talk through your talking points, and we have some great FAQs developed. We have some things that I think will help you communicate better to the public, but for the health of this fund and for the health of our organization and the operation, these were essential moves, in my opinion, as the Director, and, you know, I do take on that responsibility. So thank you for communicating that, but I'm hopeful that we can get you all the information you're looking for, educated responses to public, and then if the manager's office has anything to add, I think that's helpful.
Great. Well, Scott, Deputy City Manager Keen, I will respond from the manager's office. As you know, Greg's out, and I believe Shannon was on vacation when we had the discussion. So we had the kind of initial discussion. Prior to that, there were discussions, I think, that were occurring with Scott and Shannon and others and your internal team. However, I think the, the main discussion was with our budget team, which I believe occurred in December. And I, I think, you know, kind of what Scott said at the beginning of this discussion is that, that we own it, we, we own it, that, you know, this moved forward without bringing it to, to Council, and now I think we're in a position where we're, we're communicating as best as we can, and we're here to help you communicate it, which I think why you'll see on this slide, you know, are there any other ways that, you know, we can better communicate this to, to the public? But I think the fact that it was a discussion with budget team does, does show that we needed to make these changes, and we, we obviously needed to make them quickly. But again, just from a communication perspective, I think we'd kind of go back and do it differently, and we apologize that some of you were put in that position, but if there are ways that we can address and continue to address some of those concerns, we're happy to do so. So I hope that addresses your question.
It does, and I appreciate both of your, your responses to that, and I just want to reiterate that, I mean, I think hindsight's always 20/20, right? You, you look back and would always do things a little bit differently, but I, I appreciate the, the communications that came out, you know, in the midst of, of all of this change, and I, I've heard the conversations die down significantly from when the announcement was first made, so I, I think we're back on the right path. It's, it's just, you know, for the questions that persist, it's helpful to have that information, and, and I'll go back and look at more of the staff summary and the other communications so that we can best communicate this with anybody that still has those sorts of questions. The only other thing I had then was when you were asking the particular neighborhoods or groups you feel might need additional communication. I live in an apartment, and so most of our communication comes from like what management hears, but we don't necessarily get the same notification that goes to the management office. So if there's a way that, that things could be communicated, whether it's like a general mailer or something like that so that we have that information, I think that would be really helpful, and particularly when it comes to the, not necessarily things like bulk pickup, because I don't have bulk pickup in my apartment, but, you know, other programs that we can still be contributing to the, the health and sustainability of our community. I think we tend to get less of that communication because it's that bigger community setting, and I, I think it would really be helpful to have that communication shared out for those sorts of communities, as well as partnering with the neighborhood associations, the League of Neighborhoods, and, and organizations like that to get that information out into some of the communities that might struggle a little bit more getting some of the, the larger communications out.
Thank you, Councilmember. It's an excellent point. Our multifamily customer base is somewhat complex. As you'd mentioned, the property ownership might look very different than the residents. We have it on our list as well as those HOAs and those community neighborhoods, but I think you raise a very fair point, is how do we get direct, specific messaging to the resident that's living in that unit? And Jen took that note, and we're going to make sure we figure out a way to communicate through the property manager respectfully, but to the resident that has the behavior of putting the trash and recycling in the proper place. Don't forget to, whoa, geez. That's, that's not always the market we control, as multifamily is also on the open market. So sometimes it's not our dumpster collection service, but fair point. Yes, Mr. Beckett?
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, please.
Didn't mean to scare you. Pretty nimble for a big guy. Just a quick notation, as you see the QR code out there for people to register for communications, it doesn't matter if you are the provider or the, the bill payer for that location, you can still register under that address, and you'll get all of those emails, so that might help people moving forward.
That's a great point, and I think that's a great point. That's a great point. And I think that's a great tactic and solution that we just simply make sure everyone knows you'll get the same notice that your property manager gets. That might be helpful. Yeah, great point.
Councilmember Matthews and then Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. And just kind of to add to that, the nonprofit that I had up until recently used waste management and they used recorded phone calls and text messages. You know, I'm looking at my phone. I know I'm not a typical person, but I have 76,000 unread emails. I have several business accounts and stuff. So the chances of me missing an email were probably pretty high. So I, I always felt that that was really effective. I would, you know, I didn't have to go and look at my email. There was a message here and I was like, oh, they're not going to pick it up today. So just side note on that. I echo Vice Mayor Sweets concerned about fuel on the ground. I was in California last week. We've all seen all the fires. But as I'm walking through the streets in the neighborhoods of Encinitas, I was scared. I actually just wanted to leave because they are so overgrown. Now, they don't have pine needles, but they just have a lot of brush and stuff. So I, I don't want to, you know, do something that is saving us a few pennies, but putting the community at risk. I just wanted to say that. Also, I don't want to belabor this. We've shared a few emails with you and, and the city manager and Shannon. I would like to have a meeting. My printer's broke, so I didn't get to print everything. And I'm looking at Rick's page and it's sideways on the five-year projection. And, you know, in my opinion, I guess we'll learn if I was incorrect or not on Thursday and Friday. But I expected this to have gone to council. I've shared that with you. But I still would like an understanding. I'm looking at the five-year plan and, and between 2025 and the end of 28, 29, that fund balance increases $663,000. I mean, the fund balance ends in five years, 16 million. So we're not breaking even. We've got, you know, a healthy. So I really would like to understand how that decision in the budget team was concluded. I know city manager has made comments about there's other things that are going to be cut. And, you know, so I, I don't want to take it up tonight, but because I have that background where I could, you know, understand that the numbers a little bit, maybe I can't. I'm curious and it, it, it would help me settle to understand in a, in a broader picture. Because I can't really tell a community member, well, you know, our fund balance was going down and, and we were concerned about it. We had to start cutting, you know, services when we're actually going to grow by almost a million dollars over the next five years. So if we could set that up would be great. And then, and in that conversation or maybe at a future meeting, since, you know, that ship has already sailed on, on changing that service, I'd still like to know how much we're going to save with that. And is it, this probably isn't going to help our staffing issues. I know citywide, I'm on the board with Mountain Line and, and CDL drivers are, you know, everybody's stealing. I'm going to take from you and you're going to take from us because we, in the school, you know, stopped their, most of their buses, services because they can't find CDL licensed drivers. So I'm concerned that that's still going to be an issue. We don't have a staff and that's not going to help our overtime because if you only have five CDL licensed drivers, but we need 10 to do all the services, we're still going to have that overtime problem and other issues. So I would just like to have a more in-depth of what I thought we should have had before this. And I realize that it's already, has been done, but still there's other questions that I'd like satisfied because I still don't see the solutions being effective enough. So I'm just going to put it out there if we can do an email and, and just entertain my curiosity on the financial side of it. I would appreciate it. And I think that's all I had to say. Thank you so much.
No, excellent point and question. I will tell you, we will gladly set that up. We will also share that with the entirety of council because it is good financial data. That'll give Rick and Brandy some time to prepare those documents and make sure we're prepared for your meeting. I don't know if it's going to come up this Thursday, Friday, because it's kind of a different retreat as your kickoff. I would say that it would probably be more towards the middle of February or your next budget retreat. So don't feel terrible if it's not this Thursday, Friday, as that agenda is set. But we'll, we'll make that commitment to follow up financially. And then we'll make certain that through the manager's office, all of you have that information. And we can follow up with you specifically with finance questions as they relate, if that works for you. Yeah.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Scott worked with me here. I had perfectly formulated questions about 20 minutes ago, but this is my first time taking it last. I wanted to first speak to Ricky and Juan and tell you, tell them thank you for coming down to the city hall. We often talk about the color of money, but we don't often talk about the smell of money. And the smell of money down here at the city hall smells a little bit different than it does out at the landfill. And it takes a, a specific type of person to enjoy that atmosphere. No, it doesn't smell bad at all. I'm just, I'm just mentioning it. And, and also the benefits that come to working out at the landfill too, that I'm sure you all appreciate and that type of equipment that you get to mess with as well. Thank you guys for being here. Scott, you mentioned, I'll start with the, the recycling program. Well, let's take it back a little bit. So you said we haven't had a rate study since 2018, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So I know for, maybe not a fact, but I'm pretty secure in this knowledge that the price of a vehicle has doubled for large vehicles just about since that era, give or take. And the, the, the fact that you have vehicles that are even older than that, then it's significant. It certainly has doubled since then. I want to mention that, so, so we have, we have things that are costing more money to, to fulfill, but we have revenues that are fairly even for the past six years. We talked about recycling. Are the numbers for, for the usage of recycling, the amount of recycling that we're garnering, increasing, decreasing, or also staying stagnant?
So two points to respond to. The last rate study was completed in 2018, but the last increase in those rates was 2022. So just to make sure we're telling that story correctly. And then on the recycle products, this has been a moving target for us as a city. So in the former Norton Environmental Contract, they were taking as much recyclable as possible. In fact, the more we took them, the lower our rate was charged to the city. So we brought them more, they made more, the rebates were greater. That recycling market did not work. That is why they eventually left our market. And we learned quickly that there's not a lot of real good commodities money in recyclable. At that point, we transitions to a transfer station, which we knew was coming inevitable in our future because the dated plant that processed the recyclables was not repairable and not capitalized well enough to be rebuilt from the private company that was there prior to us assuming the operation. When we took it over, we swiftly moved to the logistics operation of shipping that material to Phoenix. We continue to do that today. We've now gone through two versions of RSO queues or procurement processes, requests for qualifications to try to improve our vendor support, our contracted processing support and our rebate that comes back to the city. So we are under a current agreement, it's a three-year agreement, we're about a year into it, with Friedman Recycling. We load the product into their truck. They take their truck to Phoenix and they process the product appropriately and responsibly. And then we receive a rebate based on market conditions for the product. So cardboard, paper, aluminum, tin, plastics. That service has been uninterrupted for our residents. What we have seen however, is financially, what used to be a cost of X six years ago is now turning into about a 1.3 to a 1.5 million dollar a year operation. We utilize collections and landfill fees to cover that expense. It's a high-valued program for our residents. There are some cities that no longer do it and there's communities that have gone out of business doing this. We still have had direction that is a high-valued program to the community and we'd like to see it continue, but it is at a cost. And it is one of the most significant that is an impact of this fund.
I appreciate the context of that question. I personally don't want to see this thing, you know, the recycling, leave our community. But I also, you know, now that we had the bulky trash pickup discussion, it's something we need to talk about as we move forward to make sure that we're handling it sustainably. And I'm glad that you're already on top of that subject. Now, back to the bulky pickup stuff, and I'm not going to try to reiterate anything that was mentioned. I really appreciate Vice Mayor's commentary on that. Kind of set me in the right direction. But, so I've talked to several, several different neighborhoods in the community. Most of them reached out to me and occasionally I'd be driving around and just stop by a place who is working out, somebody who's working out in their yard with a bunch of bags out front and say, what do you think about this? And it seemed to me that everybody felt the same way, that they needed to, their bulk pickup to be at the same time. You know, that, and I know that that doesn't work for your department. That's why you have it staggered in fourths. So that way you could have it on a rotation. I, I really don't know if there's a question there and I don't need you really to speak to that. But I think that's what we're dealing with here is that, is that we all need the, that fall pickup. We all need that summertime cleanup pickup. And when your neighborhood doesn't fall in there, you feel like you're being left out of the, the equation. I get that. But I also understand that this, the way things work in that rotation. Did you just want to speak to that momentarily?
Sure. I, I think it's a fair observation. It does come down to exactly what you figured out. It's logistics of number of trucks and number of drivers. So we have about three trucks in this program, two reliably. And you're right, if we had 10 trucks, we could hit the city and divide and conquer. But with two trucks and staff that's dedicated to those trucks, they can only hit so many homes with manual labor each month. So that is why it rotates. It is lack of large capital assets. And I would not advocate that we buy 10 bulky trucks and park them three months a year and then run them one month every quarter. So I think that's probably the best of scenarios. We have this big fleet that goes around and does the whole cleanup, but it's just not probably operationally the most effective for us. So you've connected those dots. Okay. Jenny was lurking.
Hi, Mayor and Council. Jenny Niemann, Climate Action Section Director. I just, I just wanted to add, you know, Paul mentioned that we've been having conversations. We've been talking a lot with solid waste. I, I think that, you know, just as an option, you know, we know we need to think about different ways to serve our community members beyond bulky. And so I just want to throw out there that, again, reiterate that we're thinking about it. We're also thinking about how do we use our volunteer corps. Steve on our team is a master of pulling in hundreds of volunteers, right? Engaging them and helping them clean up our Rio, our alleyways, our foots, et cetera. And so we are committed to having conversations now about how do we engage them to clean up our neighbors that might need help cleaning up pine needles out of their gutters? How do we engage them in helping out their neighbors, coming in, you know, pulling some containers as we've done in the past, but also thinking differently about what assets we have in our community? This will obviously be in deep partnership with fire and solid waste as well as our resilience hubs. How do we think about that and sort of basing some of these conversations on that? So I just wanted to throw out, like, we know we need to think differently about this. Bulky can't save it all.
Jenny, I really appreciate that commentary. And I love the fact that sustainability has really grown into this department that touches all departments and helps each of those departments, which kind of, you know, encapsulates the word sustainability. And then you've taken it to that place. Thank you for that. Scott, when it comes to, you know, driver retention, I really also appreciate the fact that you're wanting to cut down on that overtime. You know, I, I know how stressful it is. We often talk about government being, working very slowly. But if we talk to any of those drivers, that's the last thing they're going to tell you, that they move slowly. Some of those drivers have to pick up three cans a minute or two cans a minute. Or I did some math the other day and it's probably not factual, but it's in the, in the zone of they have to constantly move in perpetual motion throughout the day effectively just to get that longer shift on a daily basis done, which doesn't add to, particularly always doesn't add to a quality of life, but does add to more income, which is nice for some people. But finding that balance for our employees is really important for me, especially when we're dealing with competition, you know, for CDL drivers in this, in, in our particular locality from the private sector that is willing to pay upwards of, well, in some cases, more than a salary for a professor at NAU. So a lot of challenges there and, and the way that your staff is handling them, I do appreciate it. Also, I wanted to, I think I had one or two last points and that was about it. I really support the suspending new customer base because it gives the private sector the ability to kind of utilize our landfill services. And, and it's kind of a wash in my opinion on, on that avenue. And I also wanted to thank the mayor for stepping up when, when there was a lot of chatter around the bulky trash pickup and accepting responsibility for, for some of that as well. Lastly, Scott, I just couldn't go without giving you some kudos. Being part of that walkthrough at, at your facility. I've been in the transportation industry nationwide for almost 20 years now. And there have been in many different facilities all over the country in my jobs. And yours was one of the cleanest. And it wasn't because you guys weren't working because almost every bay was full of work. And thank, thank you for, thank, thank you and really your staff for everything that they do for the community. It's one of the most labor-intensive departments that I, I have seen so far.
Thank you for the comments. We appreciate it. We'll pass it on. And they take pride in that facility. So it's awesome to see. Appreciate having you out there.
I have just a few points. I found out about this change on social media. And I will say that I never like being surprised like that. So I would have liked to have had this conversation six months ago. I fully support employees having holidays off. That's a no-brainer and I'm glad that you've made that change. I think that the public doesn't understand, you know, we went through this big water rate discussion and they get, they get one bill that has everything on it. And I don't know that they truly understand that, how these funds work together and then end up on their bill. And so all the communication that you can put out there, we appreciate. And, and I too would like to see the numbers and not to second guess your math, but just so that we can better, we can better understand why the decision was made and also communicate it to the public. Cause it's one thing to say there's all of these points, these reasons why we needed to do it. But I just want to dig a little bit deeper and understand the financials behind the bullet points. Yeah, I think that the public would have benefited from a, a bit of public process. And I know that, that we would have benefited from knowing that this was coming.
Fair comment. Thank you.
Never want to find out on Nextdoor.
Yeah, I, I don't know how it beats us. It's just fast. But you're absolutely spot on. I don't disagree with you.
All right. That's all that I had. And I believe that that was all that the rest of council had. Councilmember, you have something?
Just as a last closing comment, I too wanted to thank your staff, your people for being here. Thanks for coming and joining us. We, we didn't have a chance to talk with other of you, but I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you're available for the, the Q and A. And appreciate seeing you guys here, supporting your, supporting Scott. And I hope you come away from this, you know, just appreciating that we're working for you and trying to think through all these things. And your time was valuable we spent this evening.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Scott. All right. I don't see anyone for open call to the public. So we will move down to informational items too from Mayor, Council and City Manager and future agenda item requests. So let's start with Councilmember Matthews.
I have nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Garcia.
Surprisingly, I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Aslan.
I'm good.
Vice Mayor.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember House.
Oh, y'all are going to make me be the only person to say anything. I just wanted to share this weekend on the first I'll be speaking.
I just wanted to share this weekend, on the first, I'll be speaking at the Black Leadership Summit at NAU. And on Sunday, February 2nd, will be a Black History Month opening reception at the Southside Community Association. I am possibly, there's a lot still up in the air because of the current freezes in external communications from different federal offices, but I may be traveling next week, the 3rd through 6th, so I may not be in person for the Tuesday, the 4th meeting, but I will be trying to tune in virtually if I can. Thank you.
Councilmember Spence.
Yes, I'd just like to give the council a heads-up. From the Open Spaces Commission, we had our meeting, I'm the council liaison, and it was my first meeting. It went three and a half hours. They had a lot to discuss on the Observatory Mesa Trail Plan, and they will be coming to the council in the near future with their recommended plan and for input from the council. So we'll watch for that. And I'm looking forward to my first meeting with the Transportation Commission tomorrow. So I'll let you know about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing from me. City managers, deputy city managers?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Mayor. Joanne had reminded me that it's a great opportunity to remind you of our employee event that's coming up next week. So just a quick reminder, our city manager awards event is next Wednesday, February 5th. It's at the Orpheum, right down the street, and we're going to start at 11:30. So hopefully you can come join us and hear about the great work that our city staff has been doing over this last fiscal year. That's the timeframe that we're recognizing with these awards. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're adjourned.